Work session to order. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs, Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lynn.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Here.
Mr. Wupper.
Here.
Motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second on the agenda. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Same sign, that motion. We're here today to start the city council budget meetings. Mrs. Weidner, are you on deck with this?
I'm ready to start.
Okay. It's all yours.
Actually, I'm not ready to start.
Got a little call as far as we've gotten.
We have approved the agenda.
Approved the agenda. So I want to thank you all and those in TV land. It's the first of our budget meetings to take a look at several different departments. First, we have none other than legal. So if you would take us away, good sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen, we'll start out with the legal department. I'm Dave Zellifer. I'm the city attorney for Waterloo, having been so since, I guess, January 1st of 2015. I'm the only attorney working here in the city hall. I have a secretary who works full-time. Technically, I'm not full-time, just legal. About three-tenths of my time, give or take a bit, has been rationed off to code enforcement. You can probably see that. And plus, I'm sick and losing my voice. So, bottom line, the city attorney's office is very busy. We prosecute municipal offenses, code enforcement violations, all the traffic violations, animal control violations, violations of planning and zoning ordinances, engineering ordinances, plumbing ordinances. They issue citations and we try whatever needs to be tried. If the cases aren't tried, I have very little to do with them. Sometimes just negotiating them or advising the department heads. I pretty much meet with department heads on a weekly basis in their offices or they come to mine. We have a myriad of problems. And committee meetings. We deal with the public a lot since they moved my city attorney's office to the office between Mayor Hart and Chief Twelka's office. I get the overflow of people angry with the police and the mayor, and if they can't find those two, they come to me. So we spend a lot of time assuaging the fears and problems of the general population, hopefully successfully. It's a business where we deal a lot with, one-on-one with the public and a lot with department heads and judges and courtrooms and those people. Feel free to ask questions anytime you'd like to. As far as the actual budget goes, I guess we can get right into that. There's very little, if any, in the way of changes I'm asking for from last year. Everything pretty much stays stagnant except for any raises that would have been given to staff. I think we added the IMLA, the International Municipal Attorneys Group. Those dues have always been paid and we just finally put us... They're about $900 a year. They're fairly substantial. So we put together a separate line item just for them so you all can have a little better idea of what we're talking about with dues. I pay my own Iowa State Bar Association dues and Black Hawk County Attorney dues and I pay a lot of those things myself. I don't think the citizens should have to pay for those. When I add all those up, that's seven or eight hundred bucks a year, depending on how many other subcommittees, like the municipal and government subcommittees and things I belong to. So as far as the dues and things like that, that's really the only thing I would ever be asking for unless there's a significant change somewhere in the international or the municipal attorneys associations. I don't anticipate anything big next year. We can't anticipate litigation. You just kind of have to roll with it. Obviously, Sunnyside South takes a lot of time. Once we get that settled, that'll give me more free time. A few other things here and there, but the attorney's office, like the weather, rolls with what is given it. Some days are more furious than others. I'll take any questions that any of you would like.
Is the legal services, is that outside legal counsel generally?
Yeah, well, I apologize. I should have gone into that. We use Chris Wendlin, who has assisted the city for a long, long time. Chris does a lot of work that I don't have time to do. He does a lot of ordinance rewriting, a lot of work with planning and zoning, a lot of development agreements, things where you can sit in your office and close the door and not be bothered and hammer them out. And he's been doing that for us for a long time. He is invaluable. Without Chris Wendlin, we would be in doo-doo. So we need him, and it does. He is on the outside. We're trying to reduce the amount of money that goes over there. He's been very good about giving us more work when we can handle it and also taking on work when we need him at the last minute. He would be here if I ever had to take a vacation and miss a council meeting. He would do things like take over council meetings. He's certainly very capable of doing that. And other than that, we have outside counsel like our Des Moines counsel, Hallers and Cooney, who worked with us on big cases where, I guess, on the other budget items, the police problems and other big trials we would have, it was done through our travelers. They appoint counsel around Waterloo, Cedar Falls, as they see fit. And I think we probably end up paying that out of our, a different budget than legal.
Well, then, when we have these large legal fees from outside attorneys or settlements or, you know, I've seen a lot of money, where's that in a budget? Who pays for that? Does the department that got in trouble pay for it?
That doesn't have anything to do with the attorney's budget. It's paid for on the liability insurance budget, if their liability insurance claims. So legal settlements would come through.
So whose department is that?
It's under city clerk.
Okay.
Yeah, we, travelers, and when they get to the big cases like that, have the right to choose their own counsel, and they do. They usually choose counsel that's a big firms with a lot of experience in trial work, especially federal court work, because the majority of what happens is in federal court. And obviously, I don't have time to take, you know, two, three weeks off at a time and do all that stuff while I'm being here.
So the 135 is mainly Chris, is what you're saying?
Yeah, it would be.
It would be primarily that firm.
Okay, thanks.
There may be some others.
Mr. Trump.
Sure. Yeah.
Just a real minor question, Mr. Zellifer. You're looking at this, it says .6 for legal and .3 for code enforcement, correct? Where's the .1?
Oh, technically, I'm not full-time. When I started this, I'm a single parent and I have to do a lot of things, pick up children from school, take them to doctor's appointments and things like that. So I told, when I was hired, I said, "I'm not going to build the city for time I'm not here." I said, "I'm going to be gone, take a tenth off, and don't pay me for it." Because I do have to do things like pick a child up when they're sick at school, I take them to a doctor's or braces appointment, those types of things. And rather than go through all the hassle of filling out forms and keeping track of all those things, because, you know, you're all parents, some days it can be 15 minutes and then two weeks go by, you don't have to do anything, and then the next day they're home with the flu. And I'd rather just not get paid for it and then not have anybody say, "Why weren't you here?" Or any of those types of things. So I said, "I'm .9."
Gotcha. Okay. I didn't realize that. And then, speaking of the outside attorney that we use locally, and this is no inference on him or his firm, when was the last time we bid that? Does anybody know?
Not in my knowledge.
I brought it up several years ago, and at that time, the city attorney also owned that firm, so that didn't go very far, but that's no longer the case?
You know, I suppose we could. I've never really considered that, judging because he is so necessary and I would hate to bring somebody in and have to retrain them. He's so familiar with all of our employees and our processes and all the things we do. We could do that, Mr. Schmidt, but it would, the amount of money that would take to retrain somebody and get them into the scene might not be well-spent. Plus, he's really good at what he does. And he keeps his, and he keeps his fees lower than a lot of the attorneys in other cities who do these things. I guess it's selfish of me, but I prefer things the way they are.
Well, I appreciate that. The taxpayers prefer things in the most, you know, fiduciarily responsible manner. And again, this is no reference on Mr. Wendlin, in case I didn't say that emphatically enough the first time. But I know several years ago, it was brought up, and at that time, we got an hourly rate because we pay one fee for the attorney, another fee for a paralegal, that type of thing. And at that time, there were at least two other local offices that said they would have an interest in bidding. And I mean, we bid virtually everything else. I just, I guess I don't understand why we wouldn't bid this, other than we're just comfortable doing it. But I don't think that's probably a real good, I don't think that's a real good reason. So I'm sure it's too late to do anything about it now, but I would raise that question for future consideration, I guess.
That secretary, don't we share her with the police department?
She does a lot of work, Mr. Lynn. She does some work for the police department, not as much as they originally intended her to do. She answers the phone for them quite a bit and handles walk-in complaints and calls. But Chief Twelka does a lot of the typing and work and organizing himself. She does a lot of work for the mayor's office when his secretary is gone. She mans the desk and answers the phone for them.
But I'm just saying, maybe we should split off some of her...
There are some things...
...time to the police department.
I agree. I agree with that, and we're looking into that. There are some things she does for the police department that I think they are better equipped to handle. You know, we have a wall between us and walking back there and getting on the phone a lot is tiresome and cumbersome, and when she has to leave the phone, leave her desk. She does arraignments every morning in court. That's something, you know, back in 1982, 83, 84, when I had this, the job as part-time city attorney, the attorney did that. We sat through arraignments. And then Linda Crowe, our former secretary, decided to do that on her own since all it was, was administrative, the setting of trials. And there was no reason to have a lawyer sitting there doing, filling out forms in arraignments. So Sherry does that, my secretary, and then the mayor's, you know, secretary has to answer the phone for her, our department while she's gone. It's not a perfectly well-oiled machine, but it's the best we can do under the circumstances. When Michelle Westfall is on vacation or something like that, the phones don't get answered, you know, between 9:00 and 10:00 in the morning. We could hit the clerk's office up for somebody, but they're busy and...
They do come to the clerk's office.
Yeah.
Actually, we do do that. Phone calls roll over to the clerk's office.
Okay, yeah. And, you know, and so, and then the clerk's office, you know, they are not sitting in the mayor's office or the city attorney's office, and they don't know what's going on over there, so they can take a message, and that's about all they can do.
I'm just thinking, everybody else bills, everybody else for everything they do. You must go bill.
Actually, that's not true for the general fund departments, so I'm not sure what... We could certainly spend a lot more time and money, but they're both funded by the general fund. I'm not sure that I understand the value of... They'd have to track their time and figure out how much is police, which is still going to be to the taxpayers versus the attorney, which is going to be the taxpayers. So I'm not sure what we would gain by that.
Efficiency is what you'd gain.
Pardon me? I couldn't hear you.
Efficiency is what you would gain.
Well, efficiency and tracking time and posting more entries would actually be less efficient if we're allocating time between the two departments.
Mr. Zellifer?
Yes.
One of the things that's been brought up in the last year has been the recodification of the existing ordinances and that, is that going to take, is that going to be something that is going to take a lot of time, a lot of your time in the next fiscal year?
Oh, yes. Actually, the city clerk's office, our city clerk, Kelly Felkley, is doing the majority of the work, but when it does involve the legal department, which most of them do, we sit down, we go over them together. It's going to be a bureaucratic pain, but it has to be done.
Okay. Are you going to, I mean, are you expecting to need help with that, other than what you just mentioned?
I think right now, it's handled, we were handling it all right.
Okay.
You should talk to Ms. Felkley. She can watch her gray hairs grow.
And the other thing was, if I recall, in past meetings like this, budgets, there, you had talked about the need for updated books in the library? Was that not brought up before?
Yeah, that's part of our budget here. We're, it's included. You're talking about legal research stuff?
Right, right.
Yeah.
Okay. So that's included in your budget?
Yeah, it is.
And it has been for the last couple of years.
We just, I just haven't pulled the trigger yet and made that big purchase yet. I'm trying to get by as long as I can with fewer books in these budgetary problems. And so far, we've been okay, but somewhere, it's going to come to a head pretty quick. And we need a law library of some kind.
Okay.
Pardon me?
Do you have another question?
I was just going to ask on the books. Are we actually buying books? Are we getting those codes by electronic?
Well, right now, we're buying the books and the supplements, but I'm trying to get onto the online routine. That makes it easier to research at home, too, and on weekends and things, so I don't have to drive all the way down here.
Right. So have you priced that cost?
We're doing it as we speak, yeah. It's, we're in touch with Lexis and Westlaw and trying to get some comparisons.
Yeah, I would think that would be efficiency.
Can we share with the county attorney?
I don't know. We could see what they've got and see if they're willing to share with us. Right now, I go over to the courthouse all the time and steal their books and bring them back. And I have some county attorney friends who on occasion will run off a case for me or do things like that, but I think that's kind of intrusive. I think we should be able to sit in our own offices. We cooperate with them quite a bit, but I don't want to be a bother.
So, Michelle, from a high, from a high-order level, what changes? Did you already mention changes to the legal department?
I haven't been able to talk to you.
Have you gone through the PowerPoint yet, Dave? Were you giving us paralysis analysis?
No, we've done that.
Okay.
Mr. Zellifer had a couple of other questions. So the, I think it was previously mentioned, the Des Moines firm, is that the $13,000, the other contractual services? Is that what that would be?
It's account 1313. It's not a Des Moines firm. That would be for any outside attorney, and we already discussed it being Mr. Wendlin. There could potentially be a little bit in there for other firms.
Mr. Wendlin, I thought it was 135,000. I'm talking about the 13,000, other contractual services.
Yeah, 1390.
Yeah. Those are two different line items?
That would not be, that's a different account. That's used for 657A processing fees.
Okay. That's why I asked. So part of this, other firms we've used in addition to Mr. Wendlin is part of the 135,000. Is that correct?
Depends on the...
There could be. That's not a guaranteed amount to any firm. That's a budgeted amount. We pay whoever we hire to do it.
How would you like me to identify that? I didn't say it was an exact amount. That's the amount that's in the budget. I'm trying to determine.
That's what I'm, and that's what I'm trying to say. It's a budgeted amount for any firm that we use.
Is it a culmination of anything from Des Moines or Ithers or Loco? It's a culmination of the different legal services we've got. Okay.
Exactly. And then the other question, and I'm sorry, I think I mentally left the room for a little bit, but I think you and Councilman Lynn were talking about sharing the secretary between the legal department and the police department. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah, well, when Sherry was originally hired, I think there was a plan that she was going to do a lot of Dan Twelka's work and mine and sort of share. Dan does most of his typing and schedule making. She answers a lot of telephones for the police. That line is, for some reason, the line, one of the lines we have advertised comes into our phone. And so, but then she knows, she has a list in front of her, she can turn on the card to whatever department they're actually trying to get, whether it's the chief or dispatch or, you know, anybody like that. And she sees the public. A lot of people just demand to walk in and see the mayor, see the police chief, see me. No appointments, no nothing, and they want to tell their story. And she's very good with the public and spends a lot of time with them. The majority of what she does is for me.
Okay. And I mean, I've heard good things about her, and people have said when they've come looking for you or whatever, they've ended up talking to her. But I guess my question was, I think Mrs. Weidner said that we don't split that position up between the two departments. And I guess I just don't quite understand that, because I think we do do that with a variety of different positions within the city, and you'd be an example of that. Part of your time is legal, part of your time is code enforcement. I thought anywhere in the city where we split a position between departments, we identified that by department. That was my only reason for asking that question. And then I don't know if you were at the council meeting Monday night, Mr. Zellifer, but, you know, one of the things I kind of asked department heads to expect was the question of, have you looked to see what other city legal departments are doing? And again, this is no inference on your efficiency or not, but as I think Councilman Lynn asked about sharing anything with the county, if you're already doing that, if you've looked at other cities to see what their legal departments are doing, because we're all looking to be more efficient all the time. So I just wanted to ask that question.
That's a good question. Can you describe the scope of a place like Cedar Rapids or Des Moines and compare that relatively to the size of our department here?
Well, we did some looking around and calling to find out about others and hold on just a second. Yeah, we, basically, we have me and we have Chris Wendlin. If you look at, West Des Moines has one city attorney and two assistants, a legal secretary. They're the population of about 56,000, about, you know, 12,000 less than us. Dubuque at 58,000 has a city attorney, two assistants, a paralegal and a secretary. Ames is 10,000 less than us. They have a city attorney and assistant city attorney, a legal technician, whatever that is, and an administrative assistant. Council Bluffs has a city attorney, three assistants and two paralegals, and they're about 6,000 less in population than we are. Sioux City, her old stomping ground, is about 14,000 more people than we are. They have a city attorney, a risk manager, three assistants, an administrative assistant and administrative secretary. If you compare us to them, we are grossly understaffed, and there's no doubt about that. We're getting along. I would love to have another attorney, but I know that the budget right now doesn't allow for it. I think someday it could come up and bite us in the keister, not having somebody else. But so far, with Chris Wendlin here, we're getting by and we're doing so very well. And so I'd like to keep things as they are, and we'll certainly let you know if things get dire.
And then also, with regards to, I think, one of the questions, and I don't know how it stacks up with the legal department, is maybe sharing services with Cedar Falls and their legal department. How are they structured? Is that a conversation as we move forward you can find and ask?
Yeah, well, I know, I'm sorry.
I think it's kind of unique in this situation, but that's a question that some of the council members would like to have asked as we move forward.
Well, it'd be difficult to share. You know, they, I represent the city of Waterloo and they represent the city of Cedar Falls. We have two different clients, and sometimes we may be competing, probably not. But I have to be loyal to my client, which is the city of Waterloo and the council. And you guys are, and the city are who I represent. You know, it's a little vague sometimes because we do give legal advice to council and to department heads and to lots of people around, but you could maybe share libraries or something like that. I think that's a good idea, but I could maybe run over and see what the, what the county uses in terms of their electronic research library and see if we could get over here and get a batch, but that's a good idea. But other than that, I really can't see a whole lot of sharing. We do help each other. I've helped, Mr. Kevin Rogers is the new attorney in Cedar Falls. He's brand-new on the job, and he and I have met a couple of times and discussed the jobs, and he's helped me and I've helped him, and we have a good relationship. He's a good guy.
Didn't Cedar Falls, up until recently, not have a city attorney?
They didn't have, they did, but it was a person at a private firm, kind of like we had with Jim Walsh. They've had a number of those, and now they finally have a full-time person, Kevin Rogers, who left Swisher's firm and went there, and now he is full-time.
And going back to your comparison to those other communities, did you have to check to see whether they have $135,000 line item for additional legal assistance?
No, we didn't get into their budgets.
Okay, thanks.
But that's a good idea.
Yeah.
Mr. Mayor? Mrs. Zellifer, I really want to compliment you for doing more with less in your department, and I want to really compliment you for paying your own dues on some of those organizations that we probably should be paying for. That's a credit to your character as a Waterloo citizen.
Thank you.
Do you want to talk about his budget or not, Mayor?
Just if you want to let, because they can go through line item by line item. What are the major changes?
There aren't much for changes. Slight salary changes in the other line items. In their additional requests, we're asking for a very small increase, so the total request for taxpayer dollars is 334,956 at the additional request level. And I, I'm not expressing myself very clearly about sharing employees. We do share employees citywide. We generally do not charge employees to different departments unless there is a different revenue stream that's paying for them. The police department is funded with property taxes. The attorney's office is funded with property taxes. If, we do charge a portion of Dave's time to code enforcement, because that is not funded with property taxes. So that's the difference with why we're splitting employees and why we sometimes don't. We would have lots more paperwork that doesn't really get us anywhere at the end of the day if we split every employee to every department they, they ever worked on. If they're funded by the same revenue stream, we tend not to do that in most cases.
She also backed up to the mayor's office, too.
Yes, we talked about that.
She's already split.
Her time is split at least three ways, yes. Yep. Okay. I... Is it part of the same other one?
Try it.
Nope. I don't, I'm not sure we have slideshow for code enforcement that we can work with these.
Well, we have it here. Are we ready to go to code enforcement or are we still on legal?
We're ready.
My apologies for, I thought we did everything correctly and got the PowerPoint here.
The idea behind the PowerPoint is to make sure that we can tell what the departments have done. We often hear that, you know, what were the accomplishments for the year before, what are your goals for the following year? So the idea of the PowerPoint was to let people know exactly where we're at so that people that are on television that may not be familiar with those departments understand as well. The code enforcement PowerPoint will be uploaded soon. Maria, do you remember any of the numbers off the top of your brain?
I've got it. I have a copy.
Well, give us a high-level overview of that.
Yeah, when I, we, I'm pretty sure we, well, I'm not a technical wizard, but I'll get these out. The code enforcement has changed slightly over the last year. As you recall, a year ago, we had three full-time employees and a temp, so basically four full-time. That was changed, I think, in July. We decided to get rid of the temporary position and make it into a half-time position. So we went through an interview process, and we now have three full-time employees plus a secretary, excuse me, a clerk, who's also full-time, and a part-time code enforcement officer who works about 18 hours a week, under 20 hours per week. And we're very pleased about that. It did lower our compensation, wages, and we got a lot of work out of them. I'd like more, but I know the feeling out there is that we can, should get by with three and a half people, and we're doing so well. I think the only problem as a result of that is it might take an extra day or so to get things done, but we haven't heard a lot of complaints about that. Last year, well, let me talk about our budget and then, excuse me, our mission statements. I apologize. Our duties and services, I know, we don't have it in front of them. What we do is we enforce all the city ordinances regarding property maintenance and public right-of-ways. And, you know, that isn't enough either, because you... right of ways. And you know, that isn't enough either because we also do things in forestry, zoning, snow removal, weed ordinances, junk cars, anything having to do with municipal infractions, just about. They do it all. They act on public complaints. They act on things that they see when they go by and just notice something. And it's a very time-consuming. It's, it can be aggressive at times. It can be very confrontational at times with between, because let's face it, when the code enforcement officer comes to your door, they're usually not there to share milk and cookies. They're there to criticize something about your property, whether you're a business or an individual. So you have to have special people there. They take a lot. And they have to testify in court a lot. A lot of the financial aspect of this is getting ready for court and being able to prove our cases. They're trained testifiers and they have to present evidence mostly in photographic modes. When they go out and they see something that's wrong, they issue normally a 10-day notice. Let's say there's a junk vehicle in somebody's backyard or something, or a pile of junk. Well, they issue a notice that says you've got 10 days to get rid of this and they have to serve that. And they have to take pictures of what they saw that day. Then they go, after 10 days have elapsed, they go back. And if the problem has been resolved, then they don't do anything else. But if it hasn't, then they have to issue a citation and they have to take another batch of pictures to show what it looked like on the date that the citation was issued. And then they have to show up for arraignments and be able to tell the judge why we're there and what kind of remedy we would like in case the defendant doesn't show up. If the defendant shows up and pleads guilty, they recommend what they want. A lot of times this involves other departments, such as sanitation or somebody who has to have their trucks and employees come out and lift up whatever happens to be there. Sometimes it can be as simple as a couple tires and sometimes it can be a ton of junk. It varies quite a bit in between. And if they do go to trial, they have to continue to take photographs and then print them all out. There's a copy of, a set of exhibits for the judge, a set of exhibits for me and a set of exhibits for the defendant. Those are the rules. And they have to be good. And they have to testify. And so they're not on the street when they're doing that. They're in court. A lot of times if a trial is set for 10:30 in the morning, there are three or four trials set and you wait. Or you may have more than one trial in a row. So it can be very time-consuming. They can be twiddling their thumbs, waiting for the trial to start. That's a terrible waste of time. It's not the way we did it in the old days. We had a time for each trial, but that's been changed, not by us. They're also doing things that used to be done by other parties. The fire department, as you're all aware, used to board up vacant properties. And then somehow that isn't their responsibility anymore. It filtered down to us. And we have to board up vacant properties. So we have an account of Menards, or you know, I think it's Menards. We, you know, we need drills. We need screws. We need plywood. And we have to, ladders. A lot of times these are, you know, higher windows and doors. And that can take a lot of time. You get a sheet of four-by-eight plywood and you got to put it up. It takes two people. And that's where our part-timer, Mr. Tim Cook, is very good at it. He's retired, but he enjoys doing that kind of work and we're very lucky to have him. But it's physically demanding work. And a lot of times in very difficult spots to get to because a lot of these properties are not maintained. Now, we have to do bike referrals too. Now, that used to be done by the Waterloo Police Department. You know, the bikes that are left out or abandoned or stolen and left out, we have to pick those up too. We also do taxi cab violations, illegal burning tickets, zoning tickets. A lot of times the Blackhawk County Health Department can call sometimes. Sometimes they assist animal control. They're the jacks of all trades. They do it all. They're very busy. They start at seven o'clock in the morning, which I know it's been mentioned that some of you may disagree with that. And they work till three in the afternoon and really just kind of eat in their trucks or on the run. The reason we start early in the morning is because we have a telephone answering service that comes in and complaints can come in that way or on the internet or whatever, or by mail. And they go over the complaints and they can log them in and get the paperwork done in the morning, then get out and hit the trail and follow up on those complaints after the sun has risen and they've gotten them all logged in. We have to log them all into computers. It's very time-consuming. Last, a week and a half ago, we have a group of citizens who like to play with this. We got 150 complaints in writing, all at once. Sometimes people sign them and sometimes they don't. And we have to log them all in and we have to investigate all of those. That's what we do. So we can provide statistics to you all as to what type of complaint it is and how it was handled and be able to justify their existence and what we do. So they're out. They're out there. They're out in the mud and the muck and the snow and the ice and the, and our budget's difficult to come up with solid numbers because let's talk about snow removal. This year, it hadn't snowed hardly at all. And so it, we haven't had to do much. Now, am I cursing us for the month of March and all the blizzards that can occur at that time? Maybe so. Last summer, our weed collection was lower because we had that great drought from about July through August, which helped a lot.
Mr. Zellfer.
Yes.
I hate to do this, but you got to speed this up.
Okay.
I mean, just high-level overview of, you know, the numbers. So people can get an idea.
Okay, well, last year, well, okay.
And then we'll get to the numbers and then we'll move on.
I'll move on. Last year, last year, we kept track of these and these I think are accurate. We took 19,000 photographs, actually 18,944. Calls and re-inspections by public, we did 11,460 calls and inspections. We issue parking tickets too. I forgot to mention that. 159 of those. Citations other than parking tickets, actual citations were 372. They assisted on removing 168 bikes. In court, had administrative orders, 328 of them. I anticipate those numbers to be pretty similar this year. They're busy. They're incredibly busy. When you think about taking 19,000 photographs and having to present them and get them ready for trial, sometimes we have to, sometimes we don't go to trial, but they have to be there. Citizen complaints, sometimes we take photographs because they'll come in and see one of you. I know just about every one of you has contacted me, you know, after a citizen has called them complaining about code enforcement. And most of the time, we have a photograph and we can say, this is why we did it. And that helps. Our budget this year, you ready to kick in here, boss?
Sure.
Probably is.
Anybody else, pardon me?
Nothing. Just, it changes. This is just baseline. What is the, what is the change?
I can do this very quickly, so.
She's much quicker than I am.
His staff is at 4.775 FTEs. That's because we did reduce the fourth code enforcement position to a part-time position. That change, they are requesting some additional funds, additional vehicle, and we need to do something about a printer or copier or some way to print all these 20,000 photos better. So they're asking for a total of $420,000 basically. And that is currently planned to be budgeted from the sanitation fund.
Any questions, Mr. Schmidt?
Mr. Zellfer, you know, as I go around to these neighborhood association meetings, I hear real positive comments about the current staff you've got, especially about Maria, but also your other staff. The, probably the complaint I hear the most, and Councilman Morrissey and I heard it again this morning at a Churchill neighborhood meeting, is basically, I'd say the shortage of staff that the complaints are called in and they're not acted upon. And I think everybody kind of understands it. It boils down to an ability to be able to respond. So I guess the question I would have, and one of the biggest complaints I've heard about Waterloo in general is our appearance, you know, as we talk about our image and everything. And as family and friends of mine come to Waterloo from Dubuque or Cedar Rapids or Ames, they don't see Waterloo looking real cleaned up or real dressed up like we'd like it to. So my question is, if we were to add another code enforcement officer and then we were to issue citations, and I had this conversation with a previous mayor that I'm all about education and I'm all about, I don't know all the codes. I'm sure nobody in the room does. And we probably violate codes every day because we don't know what they are. But I do believe that as we go out and inform citizens about a code violation, give them a reasonable time to fix it up and that kind of takes care of part of that image issue. And the ones that don't, and my perception, having been on the council now 10 years, is we have a certain group of people that are just constant violators and we, for whatever reason, don't seem to hold their toes to the fire. And it seems to me if we did and we issued them citations and took the actions that should be taken, that could possibly pay for that additional code person. Do you have a thought about that one way or another?
Yeah, no, I, part one, I guess there's a whole lot of subparts in there. When, we remember when we see a code violation, weeds or something of that nature, we have to give them a certain amount of time to clean it up. And if they plead not guilty, then it can take three months to get to a trial. And they do that a lot. And so we can't really go in there and do the work if they plead not guilty until they're found guilty and ordered by a judge to clean it up. It's a system that isn't fair to us as responsible people, but it's due process and we have to follow that. A lot of people don't understand that. We've got it. Mr. Morrissey and I are working on a change right now with some of the weed stuff that we'll bring, we tried to bring to you guys last week. It didn't go very well, but we're more organized now. At least, it was my fault, I think. But you're right. Remember, just because we get an order for a fine, doesn't mean we're going to collect. If you're on, we can, most of the time, but it takes a long time and it takes a lot of effort. And would it pay for another code enforcement officer? I would love to think it would, but I, I'm cynical. I don't think it would.
I think, so, so do you enforce the code?
Yes.
How many citations did you issue?
Actual citations last year, 362 or something.
Maria, did you have something you wanted to add?
You guys need her to be mic'd?
Yeah, I'm back here. With the citations that we issue, let me kind of explain to you how the court system works. Once we issue a ticket and somebody pleads not guilty, and Mr. Zellfer's right, we have to leave that stuff set. We have to leave it set until we go to trial. Then you have to understand that after trial, the courts give them additional time. And usually it's a matter between 10 days and 30 days to rectify that before we can put out a referral. And then it's going to be up to sanitation when they can actually have that scheduled to be cleaned up. With our citation process, I think we do a fairly good job as far as like issuing our citations to the citizens, but also part of our job is to educate and help the citizens. So when somebody goes to court, the problem is, is the courts have changed their system over here. So any fine that we issue, like our first offensive ticket is $285. That is $15 shy of 300, which means that the citizens have 30 days to pay those. If they don't pay those, then the only things that happen is that they either lose their driving privileges or they're unable to register their vehicles. If our tickets were above the $300, the citizens are able to make $50 a month payments. How much of that is actually paid? I don't have access to that.
And one thing we're going to be asking is that our municipal infraction fines are low. They're too low now. The legislature has met and they've raised them. And this year, Mr. Schmidt, and I know this was your question, we're going to be asking the council to allow us to raise the municipal infraction fines to what the state is allowing. And they've raised them and I think we should too. That's going to serve two purposes. We'll be consistent with the state. And secondly, if we get over that $300 threshold, the defendants can go on a payment plan and they can pay $25 a month or whatever. And rather than just throw up their hands and say, well, heck with it. I'm not going to pay it because I can't. It gets them on a payment plan and the money would probably churn in faster even though the fines are higher. We'll be asking for that.
Just the other day, how many citations or possible violations did you receive from an anonymous person?
150.
150. And unfortunately, that note was left on my city truck.
Maria, when you just mentioned about not having access to that information, is that because you don't have it from a technology standpoint, because it's at the courthouse?
Yeah, because the courthouse is the one that actually collects those fees. So there's no way for me to know exactly who pays and who doesn't pay.
Gotcha.
I just, but I want you to understand, we do the best that we can with what we have. And the citizens need to understand too, that there's one of us for one-third of the city. And when we get bombarded with 150 complaints in one day, we actually log every single complaint that comes in from the public. And then I make sure that every single one of those complaints get handled first. So when the public is complaining that code enforcement drives by a complaint, it's not that we're not trying to be proactive, it's that the citizen complaints have to come first. And we do make note of the things that we do see. And when we do have time, we do go back to that. But because there's only one for one-third of the city, if I get tied up in one area, which could be a two-block radius that could take me an entire day, that doesn't even put a dent into each of our wards.
Well, and I thought when I started this conversation, I said that the people I'm talking to were very complimentary of you and your staff and said the answer is another person. That's exactly what I said. So I'm here to help you, Maria. I'm here to support you.
I appreciate that.
Mr. Zellfer.
Yeah.
Could the police department ticket front yard parking as a parking violation? Or because it's on private property, does that make it not possible?
Right now, that would have to be code enforcement. Right now, we don't have the front yard parking ordinance. We'll be bringing that back up to you all again.
But could, when we pass it, could the police department handle that part of it? Just go out and put a ticket?
We could put, we could, I'd have to talk to Chief Trulka to see if he wants it on there. We could probably say, yeah, that they would have the ability. You have to say in the ordinance, which department has the ability to handle or to issue citations? If we say that the police could in those situations, then they could and they would, yeah.
If they're out all the time driving around, I would think it'd be natural to just to stop and give the guy a ticket.
Well, they have the, they also work weekends and they have the evenings too. And so that a lot of our violators know that on weekends, there's no code enforcement officer out there.
Sure.
And after, you know, the sun goes down, there's no code enforcement officer out there. And so they know that and they can take advantage of it.
All right. One other question?
Well, not a question, but just a comment. And that is, the moving of that fourth position to a half-time position, how much of monetary difference is there between that half-time position and putting it back as a full-time position?
What's he being paid?
Trying to say it's the best way to see it.
You want to.
Whoops, that's not what I wanted to do.
City attorney.
Yeah. Been there and done that.
I guess it's. Well, she's doing that, Pat, I can tell you. He didn't want to work full-time. He wanted to be part-time, the one we hired. And he's, you know, the kind of guy who can pick up the bicycles and pick up the four-by-eight plywood and do the sawing and hammering and screwing out there of the nails and the screws on the windows and things. That's what he likes to do and that's what he's good at. We'd have to find someone else who would do that. I think he's paid about, what is?
I'm going to guess the difference is about $40,000.
So a full-time position would be how much? It's shown for the, for a year.
This one doesn't get benefits or any, this is a straight hourly rate.
Right, it's a pretty big difference.
You mean the part-time?
Part-time, yeah. No Bennys, nothing like that. Just straight hourly rate, 18 hours a week and that's it.
Well, I'm just looking at options. So if that, what if that position was kept, but you added another code enforcement to make it one more full-time position? That's all I'm questioning or asking.
I'll get there in a minute. I'm just going to, I get too many things rolling around in my head, so I'm going to look.
Or better yet, maybe just hire another part-time position, that we don't get stuck with all the benefits.
Yeah. That'd be possible too. And we, you know, we were. We, you know, we were told that we needed to reduce our budget and we, I think we did pretty well. If...
Not this year.
I'd like to just kind of take a look at this year and see how it goes. See the fiscal year and give our part-timer a shot and, you know, it's always been nice to have six, seven, eight code enforcement officers out there. And Mr. Schmidt's right, we still have a lot of work to do. I think 657A is taking care of a whole lot of properties. You're all going to see another 20, 30 properties down here in the next couple of months. That leaves us with vacant lots, of course, but...
Well, and one of the things again at the meeting Mr. Morrissey and I were at this morning, I mean, the expectation is you're going to see a lot more 657A opportunities because there's going to be a lot more vacant houses because of the building that's going on. But time will tell. But going back to Mr. Morrissey and Mr. Lynn, I mean, have you thought, Maria, have you thought about, you know, rather than hiring, rather than having three or four full-time, having a manager and a dozen part-time or something? If you could get a bunch of retired city people that have got their health insurance and everything covered, you know, and they're knowledgeable of the codes and I don't know how many retired city employees would like to work 20 hours a week, but as you say, just give them a little something to do. I just don't know if that's anything you've ever thought about or talked about, but you might consider it.
That would be something I would definitely think about.
Sure.
To add, an officer would probably, a full-time officer would probably cost about $82,000.
With full benefits, correct?
Correct.
Yeah, thank you.
So, all right. Thank you, Mrs. Zellfer.
Thank you. Sorry about dragging on.
That's okay. We'll keep you on task.
You spend time down at the playhouse, don't you?
Pardon me?
You spend time down at the playhouse, don't you? On the stage.
Used to. Basically walks to the side of the...
He's a talent. You know that.
Jim, you're up.
Great.
Great.
Questions, yes, you can call.
We'll bill you. Unfortunately, I have to follow Mrs. Zellfer, so I apologize. I'm probably not as witty as he is.
It's good for one of you.
I am Jim Rodemar. I'm the interim human resources director. I'm here to discuss the human resources department budget. As all of you realize, we don't really provide direct service to the citizens of Waterloo. Our primary mission is to be a support staff for the other departments. And hopefully that's, that is our objective and hopefully we'll fulfill that by making the other departments a little bit more efficient. We do get involved with all central by human resources services and activities. That includes payroll processing, processing labor relations, which includes contract negotiations, contract administration, grievance resolution, and all aspects of the employment function, both selection and hiring, and in compliance with all the various state and federal, state and federal laws.
That's your three minutes.
Okay.
Well, you're doing that.
The PowerPoint presentation, because we don't provide direct service to the citizens, what I've put together is basically just some employment statistical data. The first sheet just basically shows what our current employee count is, and that does vary, that varies almost from week to week. Our regular employee count right now is 533. In December of 1996, it was 574. So we have dropped quite a number of employees over that period of time. We do have seven collective bargaining agreements. Those were negotiated and settled in 2016 and are good for a period of the next three years, from '07, '08, '16 until '630 of 2019. As you're probably aware, the state legislature is currently in the process of...
Can you click on the screen, the PowerPoint?
That's it.
Oh, you can't do the view?
Oh, I see. Yeah, I can. Sorry about that.
Anyway, the legislature is currently in the process of potentially revamping Chapter 20 of the Code of Iowa, which controls collective bargaining in the state of Iowa. It won't have an impact on the current negotiations or the current collective bargaining agreements, but certainly could have an impact on future negotiations. In 2016, the human resources department processed 20 civil service processes. That's basically 20 either open or promotional positions. We certified 18 lists plus one selection process for a department head, processed 30 new hires. We do have an orientation process or procedure that we go through with all new hires. We also processed seven promotions and 26 terminations. And basically, we, a human resources is also responsible for payroll and insurance administration. We have one employee who's basically dedicated full-time to doing payroll and insurance administration. We administered and processed over $35 million in payroll to 1,077 employees. And again, this is calendar year 2016. Administered and processed 1,077 W-2s and 701, 1095s. We also self-administered a flex spending program where employees can basically divert pre-tax dollars into, to pay for medical and dependent expenses. We also coordinate the 457 deferred compensation plan, which is an employee contribution plan for retirement purposes. And then also administered all the payroll deductions and quarterly reporting, and that includes IPRs reporting to the state for IPRs and also to the municipal police and fire pension system. And then in terms of insurance, we administered a self-funded health and dental insurance plan with 507 employee policies, 141 retiree policies. And then also administer two employee-funded benefit programs, one Vision and one is an Aflac program. But we enroll the employees, the city doesn't contribute any dollars towards either one of those, but we do administer those. Terms of safety and work compensation, the human resources department oversees, coordinates, and administers those programs. I just provided work injury statistical data for 2014, 15, and 16. As you can see, we have had a reduction in recordable injuries, which obviously is a good thing, as well as lost time injuries. We also administer the CDL, which is a commercial driver's license, random drug testing program. And we have to, we have to test our employees as the state dictates. So we receive from the state a list of employees generally on a quarterly basis and they tell us which employees to test. And it is a random test. We had 43 of our 120 city CDL drivers that went through the random drug testing program in 2016. We did not have any positive results, which again is obviously a very good indication that we have good, solid employees. We also work with the safety committee and administer a safety, our citywide safety program. And we do have a safety committee that meets, safety program is probably one of those areas that needs to be rejuvenated. It's one of those things that I think we have to continually look at in terms of, are we doing a good job of training and our employees? And also going out and looking for potential work-related areas or areas that might cause work-related injuries. And then we also administer the self-funded workers' compensation program for non-police and fire, and we also handle police and fire injuries in terms of the reporting data and reporting system. The last, the last area that I put together some data on was just the wellness program. In July of 2016, the city funded and implemented a new employee wellness program. 50% of our employees voluntarily took a health risk assessment and underwent biometric testing and just to gauge their overall wellness. And obviously, the goal here is to reduce employee absenteeism and health insurance costs. And well, that's a long-term goal, so it's probably going to take two to five years to determine whether or not those results will be there. We also offered a 20% discount for city employee membership at the Cedar Valley Sportsplex and we had an 80% increase in city employee membership from 2015 to 2016. One of the other things that we've done for the last five years is administer, when I say we, the human resources department in conjunction with some of the other departments, we administer primarily the safety committee, administer the annual safety and wellness fair. And this year, it was October 11th, 12th, and 13th. And it was held at the Culture and Arts Center. We contract with a variety of speakers. Some of them are paid, some of them are not, but we have, we try to cover a whole wide spectrum of health, safety, and wellness issues. And this year, we had 257 city employees that attended at least one or more of our sessions. Generally, there's a morning and an afternoon session, so employees can attend either a morning or afternoon. We also in 2016 switched our employee assistance program to Allen Hospital. Wellmark estimated and has estimated that we should save about $4,000 a year by handling our EAP problems through the EAP program in Allen Hospital as opposed to charging those costs back to, back to the health insurance program. So we had, from July to December 2016, we did have a D9 visits to the AP provider. In terms of our budget itself, there really isn't an increase. I don't believe in the overall budget other than the fact that you, we are asking that you budget for a full-time human resources director. I think that's a significant increase in the human resources budget, going from 3.3, I think, to...
Correct.
Yeah, 3.3 to four full-time employees in the department.
So that will increase their budget from about $340,000 in tax dollars to about $436,000.
Any questions?
What do we offer in that position, the person?
We've advertised it at $78,000 to $98,000 per year.
If, if we go to a statewide insurance plan for public employees, would that save us a lot of money, do you think?
That's really speculative. That's the intention. It would all depend on, it would depend on the legislation that was passed. Right now, if, I just read part of the bill that was introduced, it doesn't have really any impact on police and fire employees, has impact on other employees. It basically, what it does is deletes health insurance as a negotiable item. So basically, you would be, or the city would be able to, were able to increase the cost that the employees pay, so that would save money.
And we wouldn't have to administer the...
Well, I'm not sure. We would still have an internal process where we'd have to administer probably what we're doing now.
More, most of it, I would expect. I don't, I think we don't have any idea what the cost would be, so I don't, we don't know if we would save money or not at this point. There, I think that's probably, I mean, hopefully there would be benefit to us. I think it's probably more beneficial to smaller entities, would be my guess.
Is there a, is there a difference between a part-time temporary employee and a part-time permanent employee? Do we make that distinction in the city?
Yeah, depends on the labor contract. In some of the labor contracts, there is a, there are part-time permanent, I guess what I would consider to be permanent part-time employees that outline within the contract. And I believe, for example, the library has a, has a whole variety of part-time employees. Some at low 20, some at 26, some at 29 hours. So it does depend on the contract and what the language says in the contract.
In my right, some of the labor contracts, if, you can't have a part-time employee more than, you know, 30 days or 90 days or some period.
Generally, you're not supposed to have a seasonal employee in a position for more than 120 days. For example, in the Parks Department.
Any other questions?
Mr. Rodemar, I know you're new to your position, but didn't we not too long ago, didn't we share this HR position with, I don't remember if it was the county or the city of Cedar Falls?
I believe in 2000, I'm going to say 2003, 2005, we had a shared position with Blackhawk County.
We did that for a short period of time. They were without a director and asked if we would share. Then they ultimately took our employee and hired them full-time and we were left without an employee.
I mean, is that, is that anything we look at, you know?
It is. And we do, and I should have mentioned that, we do have a shared services committee that meets amongst all the human resources, public sector human resources entities in Blackhawk County. That includes you and I, Hawkeye Community College. And we've had one meeting, we had a meeting in November that I attended shortly after starting in my interim position. And we're going to continue to meet. And a couple of the things that we're really talking about sharing, that probably easier to share are training and safety, both safety training and just coordination of the safety program. Nobody really has a full-time safety officer or a full-time safety employee, and I think that's one area where, where all of us probably need to be a little bit more diligent in looking at doing something, whether it's doing OSHA-type inspections where somebody from the human resources department will go out to a department, look at the various areas and make sure that in case we ever would have an OSHA inspection, that we would pass it. And also in the hopes of reducing employee injuries. But training is another area. None of us are doing a very good job when it comes to training our employees. We, I think, in my discussion with the other HR directors, we all have a tendency and attempt to promote our employees from, from a line or a staff position into a management position into a middle management position, but we don't do a good job of providing training to be a manager. So the employees that we promote have the skills and the ability and the capability of performing, but they really don't know how to manage people.
And I know I have conversations with council members from Cedar Falls and some of the other surrounding communities on a every-so-after basis about, you know, using technology for some, I don't know that mundane is the right term, but certain functions like payroll or something like that, that there's no reason a person sitting in a room could not do that for, you know, 2,000 city employees as easy as 500. And that's what typically would be done in the private sector. I mean, do we look at that kind of stuff? And I know you're, you haven't been doing this for the last 10 years, so...
I think one of the problems is that cities are pretty unique, we're unique from counties, we're unique from the private sector. When you look at the type of, we have 24-hour employees in the fire department, we have, you know, shift employees, and obviously they have shift employees in the private sector too. But, you know, we have the Federal Labor Standards Act and other federal and state regulations that one, it makes it difficult, I think, to share that type of service.
Didn't we, not too long ago, didn't we share payroll with the county? I thought we did. I thought since I was on the council.
We did our own payroll, but we shared the system in terms of, we shared the software, I guess. We bought our, we bought their system to do our payroll, but we did the payroll here in the city of Waterloo.
Gotcha. Thanks. Oh, could I, can we get a copy of this PowerPoint?
It should be uploaded in Novus.
Oh, okay.
So you should be able to...
I don't have it here.
We'll get the PowerPoints uploaded tomorrow, but the budget... Oh, they're not? Okay, okay. Yeah, they're in there right now.
And we had, we had a conversation about sharing HR directors as well, so...
I met with the county briefly about, about them. I don't think the county is interested. My recommendation would be that the city shouldn't be interested either. I think, I really do think you need a full-time HR director. You've got enough employees, you have enough collective bargaining units, that it takes a full-time person to manage it.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Rodemar.
Yes, you got a quick question?
Yeah, just real quick, Joe, I'm sorry. Do you think that salary is an issue with finding a HR? Or is it really just a problem of there's not a lot of HR directors out there that would be public sector?
Well, that's, that's one of the significant problems, I think, is the fact that there aren't that many public sector HR people in the state of Iowa. You know, you've got maybe 10 or 12 of the largest cities have an HR person and maybe not even that many. And then probably the five or six largest counties have an HR department. So there's a, there's a, there's not very many public sector HR people out there. Our salary is probably not real competitive when you compare us, if we're the fifth largest city in Iowa, that salary is probably not comparable. city in Iowa, that salary is, is probably not, not comparable. We do have a different form of government. I think that, that is, that is a difference than, than most of the other large cities in Iowa.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Funches. Thank you. Mr. Funches.
Okay. Abraham Funches, Waterloo Human Rights. And my PowerPoint is up, so we just began by stating first of all, and stating rather emphatically, by the way, that the Waterloo Commission on Human Rights is by definition a diversity-inclusion organization for the city of Waterloo. And we're pretty excited about that designation. And we've been doing some things as of late to reach all of our city employees, to make us more diversity-consciousness, and we can talk about that a little bit later. But our mission is to protect and promote the personal dignity of all Waterloo citizenry and to try to remove barriers that prevent them from reaching their full production capabilities. The next slide just shows you how we support this function, to investigate complaints, provide educational training, and to coordinate and collaborate with others who have similar missions like the YWCA. A lot of times, we do collaborative things with Cedar Falls Human Rights and other missions like that, organizations like churches, for instance. We do our best to maintain a well-trained culturally-sensitive staff by attending various trainings, in-state, out-of-state, various symposiums on the areas that we work in. And of course, we work with private and public entities. Not too long ago, we worked, for instance, with a private entity, Sharon Silva, in the reaching-for-respect conversations with the community and the, and our police department to try to improve relations between our police and community. We think that was well-received based on the feedback that we got. And of course, we work closely with the, our Civil Rights Commission. This is a pictorial snapshot of our organizational structure. We have two other people who are full-time employees, paid out of the general fund. In addition to me, we have an administrative secretary, and we have an HR investigative specialist. And we have the privilege of getting paid as well as unpaid intern support from time to time. Three success points since June 2010. Well, the first one, that is a key signature development, is that we formed a direct relationship with the Equal Employment Opportunity Commission. And we did that back in August 2013. That was a long time coming. We celebrated our 50-year anniversary just last year, but for the first time in the history of the commission, we applied and got this designation as having a direct relationship with EEOC, which means the difference between $5,000 and $50,000 for the same number of cases. And we were able to jump, interestingly enough, Cedar Rapids, even though they were in line before us. We believe that happened because of our engagement with our political officials locally, regionally, and nationally, and it was a difference-maker. Number two, we've recovered over half a million dollars in economic relief for our complainants. Now, we're proud of this because what this is suggesting, first of all, and this is money that goes directly into the hands of the complainants. The commission itself, the agency, does not see any of this money. This is money that goes directly into the hands of the complainants. Now, $500,000 may not seem like a lot until you begin to appreciate that that's a 5,000% increase over the last decade leading up to June 2010. And what this suggests is two things for me. For one, it says that the complainants in the City of Waterloo believe that we are more credible than we've been in the past. They believe now that they file a complaint with us, that chances are we might be able to render better results. But, but two, and just as important, it also suggests that the respondents also believe in our office. They believe that if we say we found a violation of law here, they are more inclined to believe that. And so they're willing to come and sit down at the table and work it out with the complainants, thereby improving the quality of life in the City of Waterloo. And we are creating winners all the way around. So even though we are extracting, you know, these amounts of dollars from people as they try to make things right, in the process, we're making the whole community stronger and better because we're saying, look, we have a lot of diversity out here, and we want to include them in the mainstream of the City of Waterloo. And then thirdly, over the last several months, we had the opportunity to work with Human Resources, Jim in particular, obviously, to help make, you know, some, some interesting conversation with our 500 to 700 employees here in the city. That is going well, by the way. Our budget, as you see there, the 2018 base is $265,978. The percentage change is only $3,024. We're a very, very lean operation. Relative to other agencies, our size is slightly bigger. We are operating with less than what many have, and we are maximizing our outputs, though, and our, you know, cooperation and collaborations across the city in order to bring to the city the best bang for the investment in the Human Rights Agency here in the city. So we are excited to continue our work, obviously. And I think, oh, yeah. Here's just another breakdown for you of, of some information that you probably already know. It's just represented in a different form there. This is a reflection of the revenue that our office generates. Now, we represent less than one-half of 1% of the entire city budget, but I just want you to know that this small investment helps us by virtue of the kinds of agreements we've made with EEOC, for instance, to help bring in revenue of $40,000, for instance, in the year 2017. 2018, we hope to go up to $45,000. But these are the monies that allow us to do more of the education outreach pieces in the community in collaboration with a lot of different entities and individuals here in the city and even beyond in order to provide the kind of education outreach that our citizenry demands. And we feel good about this. We, even though we're a lean operation, we're able to generate that kind of revenue to keep things rolling. And for 2018, thanks to the strategic planning process that was initiated this year, Human Rights in particular, we'll be working on these two strategies in addition to others, perhaps. But in particular, we want to help, you know, these entities stated there, to make Waterloo as attractive as it can possibly be. And we are doing that by being the diversity-inclusion agency that we've been charged to be, to resolve and redress complaints. And then number two, we are working with the police department, adequate training staffing, community programming, and we've done that. And we'll continue to do that, of course, through our reaching-for-respect conversations, for instance, that we worked with Sharon Silva on. And so all in all, we are doing what we are charged to do in terms of resolving employment, public accommodation, and housing complaints. And then in addition to that, we're not just reacting, you know, to the complaints that come to our office, but we're being proactive as well by engaging in the education outreach pieces that I think make our city stronger, more inclusive. Are there any questions for me?
Mr. Funches, one of the things I've noticed since I've been on the council, your cost per person to travel is always very high. People always ask me, why do those guys, you know, travel so much when there's only three of them? And they just seem to take extraordinary expensive trips. I mean, it's not a, I know you get, I know we break even, but if we cut that down, maybe we could use that money to provide more services to citizens.
Right. The, the trips that we take are mandatory, actually. And oftentimes, more often than not, the money is provided for us for the express purpose of being in attendance at those trainings. So it's not really anything that we can control. In addition, I just want to state emphatically that it doesn't come out of the general fund even. These monies that we use to travel are the monies that we have generated through our work. So a lot of times, the monies that we are using to go on these trips, like the one I'm taking at the end of March, that was generated by, you know, revenue, which is reimbursement for the case resolutions that we submitted for payment.
But probably to add another layer to that as well, how often do laws within EEOC change? How, how often do those changes take place so that people can understand that, you know, you may, you know, Title IX is here now, next year it may be something else, and it's a, you, you have to be, you have to be in the place where you get the right information so that you can hold people compliant locally as well.
Ditto, ditto. He just said it very, very well for us. Everything is changing very rapidly, and we can expect even more changes over the next two, four years in light of the new administration. And so we, it is absolutely necessary for us to be at these conferences so that we can be brought up to speed and up to date on the latest changes affecting any Title VII, Title VIII, Title II laws that would affect the way we deal with our constituents here in the City of Waterloo, for instance.
And I would add, it's, this, I think you'll find an interesting fact. If you look at the budget, in 2015 and 2016, there was no property tax-funded travel. That was all funded either with EEOC funds or fair housing funds. We are budgeting for $2,300 is all for this department. That would be property tax-funded travel.
All three of these budget worksheets, general fund.
They're, they are accounted for in the general fund, but they are not, that's why I chose the term property tax-funded. So if you look at Activity 2505, the title of that is the EEOC contract, and you'll see there's $45,000 in revenue budgeted and also $45,000 in expense, so the net is zero. So there are no property taxes going to that activity. And it's a similar thing with Activity 2510, which is the fair housing enforcement. So those are all being funded with other revenue streams, even though we account for them in the general fund.
Why'd we lower the fair housing enforcement amount, like $15,000?
Sure. Yeah. Yeah, the fair housing dollars, we, we don't actually have a contract with them at this particular time in history. So we're just looking at EEOC, so we didn't count anything for fair housing.
The, the funds that are budgeted there are funds we already have for partnership activities, and so we will use that balance, and then that will be all.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor. Director Funches, I know at one point in time, you had a fair housing coordinator that was involved in investigations and things, and there was a backlog of cases. Can you kind of give me some insight as far as where you're at right now with the staff that you have as far as a number of cases? Do you have a huge backlog, or?
Right. Right now, we have three full-time employees, and they are all paid out of the general fund. We have one full-time investigator, and we have 120 cases for the most part. We have done a lot over the last seven years to try to dip into that backlog, and in some ways, we've been successful. But because of the push and pull on the office in light of, you know, some of our newfound successes, we're getting more cases coming in. So we're always looking to try to get additional supports. And interestingly enough, some of our interns help with that additional push, and we've been able to maximize our use of them in order to help us with the work each calendar year. With the housing in particular that you mentioned, we did lose the fair housing investigator. But when I looked at how many cases, fair housing complaints we actually get in the office compared to the employment-public-accommodation complaints, we didn't refill that position because we believe we can engage in the education outreach pieces and still, you know, deal with the actual cases that come in without hurting our constituent base. So right now, this methodology works for us, and it creates a win-win situation. So we're not compromising, in other words, we're not compromising anything for our constituent base here in the City of Waterloo. People have a complaint in housing, they still come to our office, they complain, and we do our best to make sure that we resolve the issue. And quite frankly, a lot of the issues that we have seen, just to, just to, just to state this for you today, a lot of the issues that we have seen are landlord-tenant-type issues, which may speak to another issue that we can work collaboratively with. But typically, they're not, they're not issues that rise to the level of a Fair Housing Act complaint where a landlord is necessarily discriminating against someone based on race, gender, sexual orientation, or whatnot. These are issues where people are complaining against their landlords, and the landlord may be hurting these tenants regardless of who they are, regardless of race, gender, or whatever the case is. So the point is, we need to make sure that we improve our overall education outreach to make sure that our, our landlords are doing the very best they can do by the tenants and vice versa, that kind of thing. It's interesting.
And the reason that I'm asking that is, is I hear you say that the staff that you have right now, you feel is adequate to take care of the business of the Human Rights Commission.
We're always looking for additional support. I mean, I just want to be, we're always looking for additional support. We need another investigator.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Funches, last year, you had a vacant position that was been vacant for many years. Do you still have that position?
I think we're talking about the fair housing investigator. Right. We just didn't, we did not refill.
Is that still, is that still in the books as a position, is what I'm asking? Is it still?
It is not. I, I think we're talking about two different things. Yeah. He does not, he has not carried any vacant positions for quite some time.
That's my question. Thank you.
Mr. Funches. Mr. Funches, so our previous director, I think, used to talk a lot about the decrease in their open cases.
Uh-huh.
And, and did you just say you've got basically the same number this year as you had last year? Is that what I just heard you say? Twenty, twelve, 204?
We usually average about 120 cases per year. Yeah, we usually have an open case log of about 120 cases that we're trying to resolve.
So the numbers are not decreasing? Because I thought, I thought that's what the previous director used to report.
Yeah. Let me explain what he was doing, though, because that's a, this is very instructive. What the previous director was doing was he was taking cases, you know, that were coming to him from the City of Waterloo and putting them in a box and sending them to Des Moines so that they could investigate the cases. And then he would come and say that they closed those cases. We're not doing that because we believe that we're cheating our constituency base out of eyes and feet that are right here on the ground, where we can go to the employer, have that conversation, set up the call, conference call and whatnot, and, and do the best we can to resolve the issues while the complainant is comfortable with the people that they're dealing with. And so as opposed to taking the cases out of the city and going to Des Moines to have them resolve them, we're resolving the cases in-house. And that's different because it's easier, obviously, to just take all cases that you have open, put them in a box, and then send them to Des Moines. We're not doing that. I hope that, I hope I'm answering your question or making some sense of that.
Yeah. And, and those are with employers? Is that what I heard you say?
Yeah, we get cases, yeah, those, those were probably more likely employment cases. Employment, public accommodation cases.
Okay. And then you were just talking a little bit ago about landlord issues. Did you say you were dealing with landlord issues that weren't necessarily human rights issues?
No, no, no. We believe that all the cases that we've been dealing with are human rights issues, and so we need to address them and redress them as quickly as possible. But no, what I'm saying is that a lot of the cases, when it comes to housing, they don't necessarily rise to the level of a Fair Housing Act concern. They're more of what we would refer to as a landlord-tenant-type issue, where the tenant is complaining. is complaining that the landlord hasn't fixed a plumbing problem in X amount of days, or either they haven't fixed a stove, or the ceiling is caving in, and the landlord hasn't come to fix that. What we're saying is that we believe what's happening is that the landlords are purchasing houses that need a lot of repair, but they're trying to rent them out. And in the process of renting these houses out, the tenant invariably runs into some issue with the roof, the plumbing, or, you know, mold in the house or something like that. And regardless of race, gender, ethnicity, we believe that the landlord would have to deal with this issue. Now, we are concerned, of course, that there's one...there's one exemption. We are concerned if, in fact, we began to find a pattern where landlords seem to be doing this kind of thing with a whole group of people, like, let's say, our Bosnians or our Burmese or, you know, Africans from the Congolese, our Congolese brothers and sisters. I mean, if we begin to see a pattern where the basis can be national origin, then that could be a Fair Housing Act concern, where the landlord is discriminating against a whole group of people based on national origin. And he's probably...she's taking advantage of a communication limitation, a cultural difference, or something like that. But to date, we have not really seen a lot of that. What we've seen is a lot of landlord-tenant issues.
Does Legal Services Corp., does that entity still exist?
Yes, it still exists. We work closely with them.
Okay.
We try to refer some cases to them when we can. And of course, we do the best we can to the point complainants in the right directions.
But wouldn't the...I mean, wouldn't the initial issues you were talking about...I guess I didn't realize your department was dealing with those, and I don't see where that would be your responsibility. Seems to me that would be Legal Services. I'm a renter. I've got an issue with a landlord. If it's not based on the various stipulations you were talking about, how does that become a human rights issue rather than a legal services discussion because of a contractual thing? I mean, I don't understand how that qualifies.
Well, I mean, a lot of times, they don't realize that it might be determined as a landlord-tenant issue. They may think it's a Fair Housing Act concern, and it may not meet the legal standard of Fair Housing Act. We may determine that it's actually a landlord-tenant issue. And so I guess to answer that question, they call us because they know we're there. Our credibility as an office has risen in the community, and so our name is out there. And they say, oh, if it's housing, let's call the Human Rights Agency. So we welcome the calls, and then we try to point them in the right directions to help redress their concern.
When you go in to figure out, when you receive a call or a complaint, you're investigating a person's complaint.
Right.
After you investigate the complaint and do some research, then you make a determination of whether it's a validated complaint or it's not a validated complaint.
Exactly, exactly.
So is this the same situation? Someone calls in and says, so-and-so is doing this to me because of this. You take a look at it, you do the research, you communicate to see what's going on. After you make a determination that it's not, then what happens?
Right. We refer them to the agencies that we believe that can help them. Typically, we apprise them of the landlord-tenant law, you know, so that they can do their own research. They may have to go to small claims court. But the only way that we can determine that it's a...an actual landlord-tenant issue is they have to call us, and then we have to engage that investigation.
But if it's not a human rights issue, you don't do any prosecution on the landlord, right? You refer him to another agency.
Right, right. We don't do any prosecution on the landlord.
That's, I guess, what I was trying to get at.
Oh, that's...okay. But what it speaks to, though, what it speaks to, Councilman Schmidt, is education. Because...and we do do education outreach. We try to do that in collaboration with community development and what have you. If we're going to make our communities stronger, we need the landlords to appreciate that we're getting all these complaints about these various situations that are happening within their housings here within the City of Waterloo. And it's something that we believe that we can cut down on or prevent from happening with a few twists here and there. So it's instructive to us when we receive those kinds of calls as to what they pertain to.
Okay. And then going back to Councilman Lynn's question about travel. So is that money, while I understand it's not eight, ten money, is that money, then, that could be used for things other than travel? And again, I don't...I don't care about the travel so much as we've talked about this for years, the...in the private sector, how much more we are now doing webinars and we're doing, you know, video conferencing and that kind of thing, and the travel budgets have been cut dramatically. And I...so my question is, number one, do they not have video conference capability and webinar capability for some of these trainings as they update laws, that kind of stuff? Number one. And number two, could that money, rather than be used for travel, be used to help local residents?
Well...
Or is it earmarked for travel, and that's all it can be used for?
No, 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 no. It's a combination of all. And to answer your question, by the way, we do do a lot of conferences via webinar and that kind of thing. So there's a combination of that going on, too. So we access training, video conferencing, as well as being in person. There's no substitute, by the way, for being at a conference in person because the networking that takes place in person at these conferences is absolutely invaluable. There are things you learn by connecting with a colleague at a conference like that that you would never pick up at a video conference. And so...and then...and to boot, they give us the money for this express purpose so that we can be there in person a lot of times. But so we take advantage of the in-person conferences as well as the video conferencing, the webinars, and that kind of thing. It's a combination of things going on. The money is earmarked specifically to help us with education outreach, to do training, and other things that absolutely benefit our Waterloo base. And quite frankly, over the years, we've been very discriminating about the things that we do so that we can give our constituency base the best bang for the buck.
And if we had any folks from our Human Rights Department involved at all in any of the recent demonstrations with Representative Blom or any of those folks?
We've had maybe some persons who were in attendance at the rally...at the rallies.
But not representing the city?
Well, they were just going, I think, as citizens of the city.
Got you. Okay. All right, thanks.
Director Funches?
Yes, sir.
Well, you had brought up, I think, building respect with Sharon Silva, and I think there were...there were four different sessions that occurred, were there not? And that seems to be in conjunction, not just with members throughout our community, but with our Police Department. And there has...have been some issues relative to some conflict between our community members and the Police Department. Has there been any metric that has been set up to see if there's been a change over the course of these sessions that has lended to a positive result? Or is that something that's down the road still?
We still have a lot of work to do, especially with respect to the metrics being set up to measure that kind of thing. But one of the things we are encouraged by are the stats that Dan Trecker himself reveals to us. Dan Trecker comes to our Human Rights Commission meetings, as you know, on a monthly basis to report to us various figures. But when we look at the number of contacts with police using weapons and those kinds of things, those numbers are going down based on his own reporting. And so we see that as a very positive index to let us know that overall relations are improving, with the exception of maybe, you know, one incident here or there in one neighborhood or another in the community. Overall, we have the confidence that overall community and police relations are actually improving. And so we just want to continue to do the things that we believe are, in fact, working, understanding that we might not be able to capture everything to make a difference, but we can work with the people who can be involved with the important positive change necessary to take the city forward. But those conversations were really good. They were...those conversations were representative of several collaborations with different law enforcement agencies, as a matter of fact. Not only did we have our own local police involved, but we also had the Cedar Falls Police Department, as well as the State Patrol Police Office, as well as the Blackhawk County Sheriff Office. There were different representatives from different churches involved with that conversation, as well as other community stakeholders involved with the organization and setup of that. Both Waterloo and Cedar Falls residents played a part in those conversations. And so there were three reaching-for-respect conversations that dealt with a very tight script developed by Sharon Silva, an agenda that we were to follow. But we had a introductory meeting as well as a closing meeting at one of the local churches that facilitated the whole conversation, and we believe that overall was received very well by the community. A report has been rendered, by the way. I think our mayor received the report. Perhaps, I'm not sure exactly, maybe not. But the report has been generated...I'm sorry. A report has been generated, and we want to make sure that we share that with everybody. It also led to...it led to the Waterloo Commission on Human Rights wanting to help get done an inclusion development index, which we are doing in collaboration with the University of Iowa. And we hope to have that done by the end of the spring term.
Any more budget-related questions? All right, thank you, Abraham.
Thank you.
Library. Sure. Thank you.
Let me help.
Steve Nielsen, Library Director. The mayor gave me the format, and I followed it exactly, so I hope it's pretty enough. Our mission statement is to provide free access to education, information, recreation, and a welcoming environment. Our motto over there is Gather, Connect, and Explore. So that'll be a theme throughout the presentation. The Waterloo Public Library circulates print and electronic materials, provides information seeking assistance, offers free educational and informational programming, provides outreach to other community organizations and homebound, equips users with important technology solutions, and hosts meetings and events for outside organizations. This is the org chart. This represents 30.18 people. As you can see, there are a couple empty positions, but that's how we're divvied up inside the library. One of the things that a lot of people don't know today is the library is more than just books. This slide actually represents all the media that's available. The handouts that I sent out earlier for each of you is to represent a lot of things that we do have. The first device up in the upper left-hand corner is actually a playaway. I took this to a group the other night, about 40 individuals inside the city. It is a book on a device. You just plug your headset in, and it reads the book to you. People are astounded, but we have over 900 of these inside the library. The other devices there, you don't even need to come to the library. They're actually available 24/7. All you need is a valid library card, and you can access them on the road when you're traveling, when you're driving, when you're mowing your lawn. You can actually listen to a book. I don't encourage you to read one. But it's a very important part that you know that we are open 69 hours a week, but the library is open 24/7. And I'll give you some metrics to support this. Gather. This last year, we recorded 253,000 people through our front doors, 30,390 cardholders. That number is way down. Once I got here, I got rid of anybody that hadn't used the library in three years. So that number is a much smaller number. All of these people have been in the library in the last 18 months. 900 library programs were held last year with over 27,000 people in attendance. Connect, and this is another important part of our mission and goal over there. We had over 80,000 computer sessions. If you look at our comparisons, our peer groups within the state, we're doing much better than anybody else, and I think the next bullet point is why. We have 99...I wish that was 100 because it'd be a lot easier to remember, but we have 99 public internet computers inside of our building between the youth department, the teen department, and the adult department. And we provided over 24,837 Wi-Fi connections. If you come into the library, go anywhere within the library, you can log on with our free Wi-Fi. If you go to our massive parking lot and look today, I passed two people that were parked there all day long using our free Wi-Fi. They didn't want to come in, but they were using our free Wi-Fi right outside the building. They downloaded 26,254 electronic items. This includes books, magazines, audio, video. We can stream movies right to your iPads or your tablets. And we engaged in 348 organized Minecraft parties for basically the teens on a custom library server. So as you can see, we're doing a lot and talking to a lot of people and providing a lot of services there. Exploration, the third part, we answered almost 68,000 questions. If you ever want to have a fun time, come over and sit at the reference desk and be amazed at what questions were asked. We circulated almost 425,000 print items. This year, as you...if you remember from last year, we opened the Hive, which is our own maker space. We have over 158 residents that have passed a test. They know how to use the space. They know how to come in and log in, log out, lock it up. And now they're coming on their own time and using the free sewing machines, quilting machines, Apple Macintosh, DVD to VHS conversion tools, all on their own. So that's been a great success. And then this last summer, we had 1,121 summer reading program participants. Some of our challenges, and I just wanted to end with that, is in gathering. As you probably know, if you've been to the library, we have one little tiny parking lot. We have a brand-new neighbor across the street who is doing really well, selling coffee. I was really worried when he moved in or when Sidecar Cafe moved in to see if we would lose our parking. So we took it upon ourselves to go introduce ourselves. And with your library card this month of February, if you show your library card, he'll give you a dollar off on a coffee at his place. So he's actually advertising our electronic resources inside the Sidecar Cafe. So we didn't look at it as a negative. We actually promoted it as a positive and want to help him be successful and both bring more business down there. I have to tell you, my staff is waiting for the brewery part to open, and we really want them to be successful, too. But again, the other challenge that we have is additional meeting space. If you go look at our peer libraries everywhere, they have five, six, 10, 15 rooms. We have one room. So, you know, how many...how many people can you actually have there? My staff says, well, we need to do more activities. And I go, where would they park? You know, if you had 150 people come in for a program, they'd be parking everywhere in town just to get in there. So that is one of our big challenges. One of our other challenges that I wanted to bring to your attention tonight is those 99 computers are all old and all one-obs. They're not modern. They're five to seven years old. They're not consistent. We've done a very good job of building our own, taking hand-me-downs, hand-me-downs of hand-me-downs, and putting them through the library. As you know now, I am a technologist, and as I went out and helped replace the monitoring system on these machines, I got hands-on experience, and some of them are an embarrassment to our city. Nobody should... Nobody should be using technology that slow. But I'm out trying to get grants to try to fund this. But again, some of the things we could do is upgrade them to Windows 10, the modern operating system of today, Office 2016. That's important today because we're seeing many of our users come in and trying to use computers for the first time just to apply for jobs. Our reference librarians do probably 10 or 12 assistant calls a day for just residents trying to apply for jobs. Many of them have never even had an email account. For people like me that have like 15, that's hard to understand, but again, that's what we do. And then the video gaming capabilities is important. If you watch, some people just come for entertainment. They want to watch a video, they want to download something on YouTube. Explore, and the last thing that's really on the slides before we jump over to the budget part, is really enhancing the children's area, the youth area, making it more comfortable, safer. One of the design flaws that I saw immediately when you walk right into the library is the youth department, but they can walk right out as good as they can walk right in. And so that's one of my major concerns. So really, that's our statistics, there's where we are. I just wanted to conclude with a couple things. I'll let Michelle talk about the budget. We haven't had a materials increase since 2012. We've been stuck at $159,000. Our budget that we're presenting tonight is a flat-line budget, so that will make it eight straight, or six straight years. Just with inflation, we're buying less materials for the same population size. We are 30.18 employees. We have many, many, many part-time employees. But I do want to mention, we have 74 volunteers that help us run the library. They contributed over 4,400 hours of labor last year, so I want to give them a virtual pat on the back tonight. We couldn't do what we do. We are open 69 hours a week. And one thing that I'm very proud of, we actually opened the brand-new Hive and we staffed the Hive and we've done that with no new employees. Now, it stretches to the very edge. It's really hard to take somebody off a desk and have them teach a quilting class, or a sewing class, or a digital class, but it's also the preparation time for that. But we're doing a really good job with the Hive. But those are the highlights of things that we've accomplished this year. Again, the budget that we have in front of you tonight, correct me if I'm wrong, Michelle, is basically just taking care of the employees with the guaranteed increases and the rest of it is flat. We have, we're, there's nothing else there. So I'm open to any questions, that's what we are.
If I, if I add up the employees, I come up to 24.24 and you said 30.18. I don't, where is it? Where am I missing here?
I'm going to move back to this slide.
Well, if I'm looking at the, you know, personnel summary, and I think I'm counting you twice in here, I don't see a sheet that shows me 30.18 employees. Are those part-time employees in there?
Yeah, there's part-time employees in there that make up that. We have a bunch of 20s, we have, the shelvers are less than, less than 20. We have 26 and 28 hours employees. I can get you a complete list of how the 30.18 comes out, but...
Do we have any vacant positions over there?
I have two currently that we're in the process of filling through the HR committee.
And this is just an idea and I don't want everybody going nuts over this, but what if we didn't open one day, you know, like the Center of the Art just does? You know, they're closed Mondays, I think.
If we didn't open one day, we could actually better staff the other six days that we're open now. We're open seven days a week now. I've looked at that. Frankly, we're at the, the edge. Summer vacations are almost impossible for people to take. My burn rate, so everybody knows, it's 10 employees per hour. I've dropped that to nine. We're staffing public desks. I've taken three employees from behind in technical services, not in the public, and moved into the public so we can stay open as long as we are. I haven't looked at closing an entire day, but I've looked at closing four hours to make it more manageable. But a day would definitely help us to staff the other six days the way that it should be.
Do any other big city only stay open six days? Not Sunday, for instance?
Oh yeah, there are many libraries that are playing around with days. The state mandate to be accredited is 65 hours. And so at 69, we could go back four. Any more than that, we'd lose our accreditation. So, but libraries are very tricky. Those that have branch libraries, they close days and they rotate hours. Cedar Falls has moved theirs, so they have full shifts and they don't have to bring in a night shift and that. So they're very creative in trying to maintain those hours. So where we are is we could lose four maximum before we lost our accreditation. I've spent this whole year trying to figure out a better way to schedule. We're reducing some staff on Sundays because of certain departments, trying to just use people better.
Are we sharing any position anymore with Cedar Falls?
Two, we were currently sharing two. One of them will end soon and then we'll have one shared person. So we're sharing homebound or third age and we're sharing an IT person between the two libraries.
When we lose those, does that mean we got to pay the whole freight on those people? Or we just, does that position go away?
Well, if it went away, we'd be in real trouble if we lost the IT person. If we lost the third age person, we wouldn't be able to do homebound or our book readings to the old homes and that. That wouldn't be as critical. If we lost the IT person, the IT staff here would be overwhelmed with our needs.
But that's what I'm saying is that when we lose the sharing thing, we got to pick up the whole...
We'd have to pick up the 40% that's there, yes, sir.
They don't, are they getting out of shared services over there, there, Cedar Falls?
Our goal is to get out of it and make those people here full-time, yeah, on both sides.
Oh, has it worked out better to have permanent people in each library? Is that what you're saying?
We have, we have suffered immensely not having full-time management in this building, immensely. And we could talk the rest of the night, and I'm sure the mayor doesn't want me to do that, but there's, there's a reason you need full-time people there.
You mean, we've suffered because we didn't have full-time management?
We did not have full-time management, yeah. Full-time IT support, we have close to 180 machines inside the building that makes all of what we just talked about possible.
Does, the schools are giving out computers to a lot of the kids? Does that take some pressure off us at the library to have computers for kids doing homework? Or does, does it, is that demand filled in by others?
Well, we added 20 new workstations for our teens this year and it's been the greatest thing that we've added. Teens now come and sit and do homework and do group gaming and play together up in their own area. It's taken the pressure off the adult area. I think most of the kids are computer savvy. Our challenge is the people that don't have the computer skills, where it takes us a lot of time to help them. I helped an individual today do a resume. Yesterday, we had a gentleman came in, blind in one eye, big guy, he wanted to pay us extra money to help fill out his form. I mean, he wanted to get a job at Walmart. And one of my employees said she'd do it. We didn't take his money. I told him, we can't take your money, but we'll do it. And I had an employee sit right there and says, I'll help him as soon as I get back from break, I'll sit down and do that. So that's the kind of stuff we're doing.
Well, good for them.
You're coming in less than, is there a reduction in what you're asking for this year? Did we get to that part yet while I was on?
We haven't, I think we're just ready to transition.
We're right there now, sir.
Yeah.
Mr. Powers has a question.
First of all, I just want to make a comment. I truly love going to the library. I take physical and disability kids there occasionally on Saturdays and also my grandkids. And I think that it's, it's a great experience and great staff that benefits this community tremendously. On the grant writing position, are you the grant writer? Or do you have a staff member that's a grant writer that may have an opportunity to write another grant?
We have no grant writer position. I have successfully written grants in my career and I've helped many libraries. And so I'm trying to figure out what pays here. And I've reached out nationally, including 3M and some of the big vendors that I work for, because we really need 100 new computers. It's $90,000. I mean, in my old life, that was nothing. And so I've reached out to those companies to see if they could help fund it. But it's huge. Thank you for the compliment. I do want to explain the four pieces that I handed out. One is the annual report. So it gives you a lot of the numbers that's in this thing that you can take with you. The second one, the little handout thing, is really a cool resource. It tells you about your free books, even free music. You can download three songs a week and put it on your devices. And we have on the, one of the handouts, 57 journals, magazines that you no longer have to subscribe to. This is probably one of the most underutilized resources in the city that our residents could save money if they would just sign up for free. I got the, my Handyman magazine, got an email last night, came to me, I opened it up, I read the whole Handyman magazine, came in today, the Handyman magazine showed up at the library, the physical copy. But I could really use all of your help as you're out there talking to residents to let them know that there are free resources there. They don't even have to come down and fight for parking, they can do it right from their house. All they need is a library card.
Budget?
So due to some of the reorganization that actually occurred this current year, their general fund total asking is a reduction of about 63,000. And then they have multiple sources of state funding and, oops. So you see lots of smaller activities, the way that they do their accounting for many different sources of funding, from state levels, from gifts, memorials, those kind of things. And so those are all no property tax funding, so we're going to kind of cruise past those. The library also has the fortunate situation that they do have a special voted-in voter levy. So we do charge about 30% of salaries to that levy and so that will be about $600,000.
Which levy was it?
Pardon me?
Which levy?
It's a special library levy. It's called the library levy. Yeah.
The 27, okay.
Yes, 27 cents per thousand of value. Yep, that is what it is.
Any other questions?
Steve, again, I appreciate you allowing, and the mayor letting me be the liaison for the, for the library board. And I enjoy those meetings when there's lively conversations and everybody seems to go around the room and have something to say. But one of the things that I've been worried about for the last couple of years is when you talk about accreditation and how close our library gets to losing that. And I believe that one of the things that you said was that the materials is one of those categories where there needs to be some kind of improvement. Another thing that you talked about and I reviewed was our relationship with our, our community's relationship with their library and how it compares to other communities or other cities that have libraries and how we just sort of seem to be falling behind all the time. And that concerns me as well, unless I misread what you handed to me, so...
No, Pat, I appreciate you bringing that up. I actually have a copy of it here and I'd gladly share this with anybody else that's interested. We have a peer group in Iowa, as you know, the urban, Iowa Urban Library, Public Library Group. And it's the 10 largest libraries in Iowa. We happen to be in the fifth largest metropolitan area, as you know. We rank last in materials. We're behind the smaller libraries of that group. We're last in almost every category, we're last in staff, we're last in MLS as the master level librarians by a long ways. We're last in collection size, but you know, if you don't increase the collection for six years, you're going to drop. And so I shared this with my board and Pat a couple weeks, a couple months ago, but this is one of the things that alarms me, our accreditation. If we hadn't have used all of our possible funds last year, we wouldn't be accredited for the next three years. Unfortunately, when you compare our numbers from last year to this year, because we used all of our one-time money to make accreditation, they only do accreditation every three years. So we won't, if they did it this year, we, we wouldn't be accredited anymore inside the state. We just don't have any one-time monies left to do that with. So yeah, that scares me tremendously, so...
So how, Steve, do you see that getting resolved so that that's not a concern year after year after year?
Well, we're going to have to either get some more money from the city or I'm going to have to write some really good grants. That's the only way. We are starting an endowment program. As you know, we've reached out and we're reaching out to a couple of the foundations to see if we can get an endowment revenue to help us out there. But if we don't do that, we won't be accredited, our accreditation's for three years. So right now, we're in dire straits. But the materials budget, $159,000, should be closer to $300,000 in our city. And once you do that, the circulation and everything goes up. I mean, we just don't buy enough stuff and we don't buy enough copies of the stuff that people want. And again, I just want to say, we're doing everything we can to leverage what monies we have. We shortened the loan periods on DVDs so we can get it out to more residents. Rather than a week, it's now three days. And that's helped get those things out to more people quicker. We're doing, we're taking all the low-hanging fruit we can.
And Michelle, if, I think this is the second year that Steve's been involved with submitting a budget and I got the impression that he sort of pinches pennies when it comes down to his budget?
He maximizes to the potential of what he has.
Yes, yes, excuse me for my choice of words. But I had one other thing that I just wanted, and to me, this is not just a quality of life issue, which a lot of people would see a library or just put it in that category, but it's also an educational issue for our community, especially for our younger kids. And we have a college, we have a community college here, and it's also sort of a social learning place for our community and our kids in our community. One of the things that you'd mentioned was only one conference room. And it's a great conference room. I wish that some of the things in there got repaired a little bit quicker, but it still is. But the third floor has always been brought up as being underutilized. I don't know if there's anybody who's come forward to want to rent that in the last half year or so, but is there any possibility that that area could be used for conference rooms too?
Well, the third floor doesn't have the infrastructure. We'd still have to do the remodeling. What I've targeted for conference room areas is actually on the second floor, behind the computer area. And I'm, I've got several grants out there looking for funding there to help us put in not only a wall, but the equipment to make that possible. If we got those two, if we got two new conference rooms on that floor, we could have three times as many people through the building for meetings. Right now, you call and if it's full, like we tried to do tonight, we have an activity there tonight, so we couldn't have this meeting there, we only have one room. But if we had three, we could do three times the meetings. When we did 900 meetings with one room, imagine what you could do with three.
Thanks.
We'll go to Mr. Amos and Mr. Lynn, and then Mr. Powers, and then we'll finish with Steve and take a bathroom break.
Yes, sir.
One of the questions I'm hearing is, is can you kind of help me out here to understand what the ramifications are behind losing your accreditation?
Well, if we, if we lose our accreditation with the state, many of the accounts that Michelle showed you earlier, those numbers drastically go down. Because we are accredited at our size of library as high as we can, we get the maximum money we can from the state. Once we lose that, those numbers, those numbers almost dissolve. So you're talking $50,000, $60,000 a year that would dissolve. So you're talking 50, $60,000 a year that would dissolve. The other thing is a pride factor. Being accredited takes some work. I mean, there's a lot of things that you have to do. And I don't think we'd want to be one of the top 10 libraries that aren't accredited.
And hearing that from a standpoint of, you say, $50,000 to $60,000 in order to maintain accreditation without getting the actual grants and things that you're talking about, what I'm hearing here is that would be an investment for the city to make sure that you ended up keeping that accreditation from a dollar standpoint. That's why I needed to know what the ramifications behind.
That's what it is. Yes, sir.
With the, with the budget you proposed, the base level that we're taking a look at, are you gonna, if it stays as it is, are you gonna lose your accreditation?
Yes, sir.
So right now, what you have proposed loses your accreditation?
In three years, if the pattern of the last six continue, we won't meet our accreditation on standards that are currently out there. Now, they're changing the standards, taking that 10% of our total budget as necessary. As that stands, we could still maintain our accreditation and then fall below that 10% line.
So what you have proposed today, or what we have up there, is a loss of accreditation?
If we were, if we had to go, if we had to be, we're accredited for three years. If they did accreditation this year, we'd lose it. But we're not. We have three years.
And they do have donated funds, like with the Community Foundation, what has typically happened in the past, that we would use.
Because I'm hearing the accreditation, like, you know, 2018, if we, if we report the budget up here, accreditation is gone, and that's not the case.
Michelle, this is for you. That last worksheet, I'm kind of confused. Do we plug in the levy, property tax up on that first line as a revenue that balances out the?
It will when we, yeah.
That's what I mean.
We typically don't post the property taxes till we certify the budget.
But that's, I'm looking at.
Yep. So you're probably seeing revenue in prior years and none this year, and that's just because we haven't plugged it in yet.
Okay, thanks.
Yep.
Just a couple of comments. Have you looked at, and I don't know if it's legal or appropriate, but like major employers in Waterloo that do a lot of computer purchasing, have we looked at like a group purchase where we could have a conversation with them that would reduce our costs?
I haven't.
If we did group purchasing of computers?
I have not. If you know of anybody that does that, send them my way, and I'd love to go talk to them.
Well, I'd rather have you go to them, because there's, there are a few companies. I think Darren Companies One, BGM may be another one, that purchases a lot of computers.
No, if I, if I, again, I'm new. If I just know the person, I'll gladly walk in.
Okay, I'll talk, I'll talk to you at some point over that.
Let me add a layer to his question. Since there may be specific items you need, conversation maybe with the Hawkeye Library, UNI Library, you know, maybe that type of conversation. Waterloo Community Schools for computer purchases too, because you probably have some of the same niches that they may be looking for outside of software differences, but maybe that's another area.
Yeah, that could be, I mean, it wouldn't be, they're giving you computers, that it would be just that we're a group purchase pricing, rather than through Dell or whatever.
Well, we are the largest, and we have more than any of those libraries put together that we're offering to the public. We're actually helping Hawkeye, and we're helping UNI right now in some joint efforts because of our expertise.
Okay. So you may be at the lowest purchase price of a computer at this point, rather than going to another, like Deere's or another company that could help.
You know, I, you can, I've done some bulk buying in my history where we can drive the price down $50 a unit. But if we replace on a five-year cycle, 20 a year, you're getting a pretty good price. Computers have almost become a consumable.
Yep, they're always.
Yep.
And the other one is that when you get a moment or sometime, and you may already have done that, but I would suggest the Kellogg Foundation. They seem to be very supportive of kids' issues and funding-type things in this area. So I would look at Kellogg.
They, they gave me my first three, $30 million grants, so I've already written to them.
Okay. I just want to make sure that they're being utilized.
No, for Utah State. That's where I started my library career, was with Kellogg, so thank you.
So are you saying you don't have the time to do these grants? Is that why you haven't done them yet? Is that what?
No, I've already written multiple grants.
Since you've been in Waterloo?
Yeah, and we've already been turned down a couple of times. What you have to do is find the right company, the right group that wants to fund your processes.
Gotcha.
And once we get tied into that, then we can keep it going.
Okay. And then you currently don't have any kind of endowment? Is that correct?
No, we have a, we have a foundation. We're trying to build an endowment. And then we'll try to build that endowment and grow it. When I was at Bettendorf, we started with a goal of getting a million-dollar endowment, and we got that.
Okay. And then you said you've got two open positions. How long have those been open?
Oh, they've only been over here for a couple weeks.
Right.
Yeah.
One, maybe four weeks.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then going back to computers again, I mean, most companies, talking about John Deere, BGM, many of you talk to anybody about donating their computers, because those, a lot of those companies turn those computers over every few years. And you're talking about having 10-year-old computers. I would think you could get computers for free.
But.
They are gonna be new.
You can, you can get used computers, and we have a whole bunch of used computers that were donated from the schools and other people. But when you're trying to support 100 computers, and they're not alike, and they're not the same, you're always, you're spending more money. I mean, these are five, $800 computers maximum. If you, if they're not apples and apples, you're piecemealing. And that's what we've done, is I went out and touched them and tried to install software on them. They're not even alike in, in the software realm. So when you're doing a big, massive support, you really want to get them pretty much the same thing. So, yeah, we've done that over the years, and that's where we are.
Thank you.
Right. Any other thing on the budget? Are we good to go? Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
If we can take a restroom break, that would be very nice right now.
Thank goodness. Glad it was.
Emergency vehicles and Waterloo schools. Central garage is funded by the general fund. We have eight, what I'm saying here is eight full-time vehicle mechanics. Six of those are actually mechanics, one is a fire mechanic and he's assigned to the fire budget. And I have one shop foreman and he's a working foreman, so half of his time is actually assigned to vehicle maintenance. Those mechanics are split over two shifts. We run first and second shift to support the vehicles and equipment scheduled for both scheduled and unscheduled repairs on the entire fleet. And then I have one full-time parts clerk. We have, we have no administrative function assigned to the central garage. We share those resources with the rest of the public works administrative staff that's funded by the street department and sanitation. And with that, I guess I'll take any questions short and sweet. I do have, and it's not part of my presentation there, I wasn't sure exactly where we put the additional departmental requests. So as I said, we have 8.33 personnel assigned for FY18. One-third of my salary is tied to the central garage. The other two-thirds are tied to sanitation and the road use tax fund in the street department. I'm requesting one additional mechanic to be primarily hired to support fire operations. We are probably an estimated 2,000 man-hours backlog on fire equipment. And what we're finding is the extent of repairs required primarily due to corrosion, we just can't get caught up. You know, we have an open door policy and as, and that front, those frontline vehicles as they roll in, if they have an issue, we need to get them turned around, which then pulls the one fire mechanic off of whatever task he's working on to take care of that equipment that's supporting having that firehouse open. The fire mechanic that we have right now is currently, I would guess, his estimate is a year and a half to two years from retirement. It takes time to train somebody on, on fire equipment. It's, it's very unique and even that, it's, it's not all the same. We have a variety of different pieces of equipment and it's all peculiar. It's not just normal vehicle maintenance. It's electronics, it's plumbing. There's just, there's just a lot to it. And it's going to take somebody some time to train up on that. So it would give us the opportunity for a year and a half to two years to get somebody up to speed, at which point in time then we can look at, if we get the backlog taken care of, perhaps we don't refill that position once he does retire. We'll just have to see how that goes. So that, that's my proposal to you. I mean, I'm presenting the need. It's up to you as to whether or not you want to fund that, but we do have a critical need.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Mark, the, the fire, the extra fire, the extra mechanic position, it would be out of the general fund, but it would be billed to the fire account, right? But it would still be out of the general fund. Is that, am I, am I right?
It would be out of the general fund. I mean, it would be supporting general fund activities.
It would be taxpayer money to do that.
Correct.
Okay. Have you talked to the fire department at all about offsetting the mechanic with personnel in the fire department, anyway?
We talked about that some time ago. I don't know that it was
Well received.
In their best interest to do that. I think it's something that we need to propose to you and get your determination on it. I know they have other issues with relative to getting people assigned to the firehouses and keeping things open on that end.
Are we, are we really at a critical point with that labor? You're using this 2,000 hour. Is that kind of the tipping point? If we go over, much more over that, we're going to
We estimated last year we were about 1,500 hours.
Okay, so we're
And, and we continue to fall behind.
We're losing.
You know, the trucks get older, they require more maintenance. We've got Truck 306 sitting there that we've got stripped down and it, it came in with an issue. And over the course of time and further investigation and we've got it down to the point now where we had to have the actual frame fabricated because they don't carry parts for those anymore. So at, at some point in time, there's, there are diminishing returns.
Came in with a sneeze and
Well, it came in with more than a sneeze, but I guess what I'm saying is what we're finding is
Cardiac.
Is as you start removing parts, you find more problems behind that. And it just, it just escalates.
How come that position isn't over in the fire garage and parts and services?
Mainly because I didn't realize that it was going to be dedicated to fire, so I
Well, I mean, but that's where our shortfall is.
That 56,000, that's about what this new position would cost, like the position already there.
Well, it's
I think it would be more than that.
The cost is more than that.
Well, I mean, salary's regular.
You're right, the salary's regular.
It'd be about, it's about double that if you're going to move that
Oh, not double. It, it, let me, I'll just tell you, it'll be easier. And it'd be about, about eighty, eighty-three-ish.
Okay. But what I'm saying is I'm looking at that, right? That should be over there now. Into fire.
Well, it's going to primarily support fire.
We may move it to that.
We may move some of it, but it's still all general fund.
So it's, it's, uh, first priority is to deal with fire, getting those back.
Correct.
You can also utilize that to help with some of the backlog to, of other cars and stuff that need to be dealt with.
We could if and when we get to that point. You know, but I, I'm just being honest that, that we have a significant issue keeping equipment in the firehouses and keeping it serviceable and
Now, is it, is it something so specialized that we, I mean, I guess we can outsource anything, but would it be, does it not make sense to outsource fire truck repairs?
No, I don't believe it does. You know, there's emergency vehicle technician training that's part of that for predominantly fire and I, the NFPA has, has standards over and above DOT to be able to certify that those vehicles are, are roadworthy and from a liability standpoint, when you talk about emergency equipment, there's a significant amount of record keeping that has to be done.
And the, the truck shops around town don't have that mechanic?
I'm not saying they wouldn't have a mechanic for
But I mean, they're not certified like
No, correct.
All that stuff. And they probably don't want to make the investment to work on our trucks.
Not only that, but, but even some of the other vehicles that we have, when we have had to outsource things, we find that they're busy too. Our stuff, we don't have priority. Uh, our vehicle goes there and it sits in the back lot for a week or two before they can even get to it, which isn't real exactly what we're looking for.
Mark?
Yes?
Mr. Mayor, so just to back up a little bit, if I totally understood, what's the total cost of the added mechanic, Mark?
I think it's about eighty-two, eighty-three thousand.
So do you look into any efficiencies before jumping to hire another full-time person?
You know, it's, um, we, we have chargebacks from other revenue sources that's, that support the other mechanics that we have. You can only, you can only do so much. We're looking at almost 73 pieces of equipment per mechanic.
So I understand the mechanic on the fire equipment, if that's a specialized person, I understand that, but you know, you have other equipment that you're just doing basic work on, so why could we not outsource some of that work or why could not a couple part-time mechanics step in and work on those vehicles?
I, I'd be hard pressed to find part-time mechanics that would be available and have the experience level to be able to work on what we work on.
Have you ever looked?
No, but I've, I've actually looked at civil service lists and, and we've advertised for positions and I know what's out there that's interested in coming to work full-time.
So we've never, we've never looked, we've never really searched for part-time folks or to outsource this, the general work to this point?
We look to outsource on, on particular projects, but you know
There, there are certain occasions when we do outsource things. It depends on the turnaround time we need.
So we do some of that now.
We have other departments that, that have to have their equipment worked on because people want their streets plowed and their garbage picked up and all of that.
I guess my point is if you factor in the cost of a full-time employee and the cost of benefits that are only going to go up in the future, it would be wise to look at other ways to get the job accomplished without having to lock ourselves into another full-time employee. You know, I'm sure there's outsourcing that could be done, I mean, that's only logical. Or I'm sure that we could work with others to bring in some part-time mechanics to work on some of the, of the more general type of work that needs to be done, you know, for the city. I understand some of it has to be specialized, but if you're looking at that many mechanics, it has to, you have to break that down somehow.
I have, I have one and a half, uh, the shop foreman I have works on the gas side and he had, they have 200 vehicles that they take care of. And so that's all the squad cars, that's everything that's gas-powered in the city. They're pretty much booked and, and they're overworked as well.
Yeah, I'm not disputing that.
I'm just, I'm just identifying a need.
Have you, have you looked at all the other possible solutions before immediately looking to hire another full-time person? That's my main question.
Based on what I've seen for applicants on positions that we've had in the area, I don't think there's anybody out there that's interested and qualified to come work for us. I've not seen that. It's, it's not the type of job unfortunately that today's youth wants to get involved with. They want to work with computers, they want to do that kind of stuff. They don't want to get their hands dirty. So you're playing to a limited field.
So it would seem to me that we should spend some more time trying to figure that, figure that problem out as a manager. You should be managing that process, 83,000 for another full-time employee. It seems to me that we could come put our heads together and figure this problem out, but I'll let that
I wouldn't, I wouldn't go as far to say Mark is an excellent manager.
I'd say he's not, I'm saying
You did kind of indirectly allude to not being management. The problem that we're having right now, there's a difference between efficiency and cost savings. Efficiency is when you get ready to put something in place and you need to get that fire truck back because they have to go to a fire, they have to do things, or you have a squad car, those things need to be put back. That's efficient in a timely manner. Cost savings mean how can we save money from what we're currently doing? Right now, if you take just the 200 cars you just said with the gas and you multiply that by an oil job, just an oil job, because you have to change your oil at least one time a year, that's 200 cars times $30 per oil change that you send out. Maybe you can get a deal, that's $4,000 right there if you did $20 per car. So I think, you know, and I understand your question, your questions are good questions, but I think this has been taken a look into. There's other places that have been trying to look to us to take on some of their cars, but we just can't, we can't do it because we don't have the capacity. But I mean, he's done an excellent job over the years to, to get to this point, but we're just at a breaking point where the council is just going to decide. I mean, it's ultimately up to your decision. Are we going to not be efficient or are we going to take a look at cost savings? But by the time you add up all the cars that we have, all 480 and one oil change, let's say $20, $25 or whatever it is, plus the time it takes to do it, time they're out of service, plus the specialty, I mean, we'll be looking over $80,000 anyway. So it ultimately boils down to, you know, you guys make the decisions over what you'd like to see, but we're just at a critical point. Nobody else is coming in here asking for stuff. It's all baseline salaries, of course. It wouldn't be on here if he didn't believe it was an urgent need.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Morrissey was next.
Yeah, uh, Mark, I was wondering, I mean, you talked about the, the additional 500 hours going from 1,500 last year to 2,000 behind there. Are there any other areas other than the fire vehicles that have lag behind too, where there's man-hours behind?
Yes, we're, we're short in, uh, street department. Some of our construction equipment is, is getting old. A lot of our road graders are of 1998 vintage. You know, mechanically, equipment breaks. There's just no way to get around that and what we're finding is it just requires more man-hours and, and more intensive maintenance to, to keep things on the road. And that's true in just about every department.
So, excuse me, Tom. So within the next budget year, if that's not, if there's not some kind of allotment for those kinds of unforeseen things, what will happen?
Well, eventually, um, and I would hate to see us get to this point and I don't think we necessarily would, but, because we have a really good work ethic, work ethic with the employees that we have, but we would not have the equipment to, to support the departments that need to provide citizen services.
Thank you.
You know, and, and again, I'm, I'm just letting you know that we have, we have an issue. I'm, I'm not trying to sugarcoat it, I'm not trying to, to not be upfront with it, but it's an immediate need and it's one that I think in, over the course of a year and a half or two years, could rectify itself potentially with, with some extra help and
Help being some extra dollars?
Well, with an extra mechanic and at that point in time, because the existing mechanic is bumping up against retirement, it, it may very well prove that, that we would be able to potentially not rehire that position if we can get caught up.
Thank you.
It's not necessarily a, a 20-year or, or necessarily a career position.
Everything over in that shop is heavy, it's hard, it's rusted. It takes, and to provide service on 430 vehicles with eight people just simply amazes me that that's even a possibility to happen and so, uh, but with eight mechanics, that many vehicles, and I also would look at it as a cost issue, not only in employee costs, but the cost of things that we're still paying for on the bond, on our bond ratings for bulldozers and backhoes that are sitting in a shop broke down because there ain't anybody there to fix them. I think that's a cost efficiency that we also need to look at when we do the matrix of all of this, that there isn't efficiencies and getting that, things in there, getting them serviced properly, getting them repaired quickly and back out with a provider, an operator on a backhoe running it, it's, to me, that's more efficient. So I just, I just think it's amazing that you can do it for 430 vehicles with eight people. I can't do four vehicles at home.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
One of the things that, I'm looking at this and, and Mark, to your credit, one of the things that I see here is, is a preventative maintenance program and working at Deere's and, and that, that was one of the things that they did from a efficiency standpoint was to start preventative maintenance to ensure that the vehicles that were in service stayed in service longer. So when you talk about efficiencies and those things, to me, that additional mechanic being able to help get things caught back up, eventually you'll get to the point to where that preventative maintenance program that you're talking about will be a cost benefit to this community also.
So you mentioned road graders and some of that stuff. How, how old did you say some of those were?
1998. So, so we're looking at
So wouldn't those be well beyond their bonded value? I mean, that's almost 20 years old when Councilman Powers is talking about their having this value from our bonding indebtedness that, those would be way beyond anything that would be capitalized for that, right? I mean, typically you wouldn't extend the life cycle of something like that for 18 or 20 years, would you?
You wouldn't, but I think it's, it's to the point where you have to prioritize exactly what equipment you can squeeze into what is approved for any CIP cycle. And it's, I'll be honest, we, when I came, we had some really antiquated snow-removal equipment. We've put a lot of our money into snow trucks, which are very expensive. We have rental graders right now that we, that we provide snow removal on and, and the price of those is upwards of $600,000. Very expensive when you look at the CIP requests and, and getting a percentage of that, you just, you know, you just have to prioritize and, and it's, how many departments can you support at one time, so.
And those rental units, those include the labor and service and all that stuff too, Rex. And as we talk, every budget cycle, the primary expense is people and, and the cost of people continue to go up where the equipment, depending on what it is, actually may be going down, especially if it's technology, because technology typically costs less, does more.
Well, it, it does, but when it comes to vehicles, what we find is as they automate vehicles, it actually costs more because of all the computer systems that are involved in, in operating engines and so forth. I, I understand that people are expensive. I'm just identifying a need and
And, and going back to Councilman Jacobs' question, I guess, so, I mean, have you looked at maybe lining up, pick a name, you know, Deere's or Idell's or anybody else just saying, hey, we're going to bring you over this, this line of vehicles for the next three months or something, just to get caught up and get them off, off your list? Get them off your radar? I mean, if we're talking about lube jobs and oil changes and that kind of stuff, not talking about fire pieces and something like that, I mean, just to get them off your list?
We do some of that.
Okay.
We do some of that now, as we need to. But our problem right now is fire equipment. We're so far behind.
And then do you, are we currently doing anything with the county as far as servicing their vehicles?
We service the health department and the, uh, the veterans office has, has one vehicle and they've asked that we work on servicing and it's predominantly scheduled maintenance, just oil changes and so forth.
What, what is
But then we, we provide fuel to all the, all the county departments and all of the schools.
What does the sheriff's department do for their vehicles, do you know?
Uh, they, right now, I think, the last time I talked to the sheriff, I think they were using Deere. He would certainly like to entertain us doing their maintenance, but there's, uh, there's no way I could support that with, with the manpower that we've got and, and we've looked at what it would take to increase our, our labor fleet to accommodate their vehicle fleet and, um, it would be significant to the city and I don't know that we would get our return on investment. A, and then B, um, I don't know that we want to go down the road of, of Waterloo City equipment sitting and, and county equipment being worked on, so.
And then what about Cedar Falls, do you know what they do?
They have their own shop.
Okay, right, thanks.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Jacobs.
So Mr. Rice, just to follow up, an average, an average, uh, you know, let's, let's take the fire equipment, put it over here on the side, let's discuss. So an average mechanic that would work on some basic cars of the 480 that we have, how many, if you said, all right, go ahead and do the basic maintenance, like, you know, service, oil service, that, how many cars could a basic mechanic, one of our mechanics do in one day?
Depends on what they find. If they're just doing an oil change, probably four to five. But we don't just do oil changes. We do a complete visual inspection. It's part of what we have as an A service. When you talk about preventive maintenance, our program, we have four levels of maintenance that we do on our equipment.
Which would be similar if you were to outsource it. When you take your car anywhere, they would do the same exact thing, would they not?
I can't speak to that. I'm, I don't know that they would do exactly what, you might pay for what you think you're getting, but I can't verify that you'll get that. Any other questions?
Mr. Mayor. Are we at, to the budget yet? Have we looked at, are we looking at the budget now? Where's the line item for the rental of the equipment? You said it was 600,000?
That's not in the garage budget, that's in the street budget.
Okay, gotcha. No wonder I can't find it.
Any other slides? Anyone? All right, thank you, Mark.
Well, I mean, it's, if the exception of that is flat.
Fires up next. The airport has volunteered to go Saturday if we need to, but you've already waited so long. So you, we'll wait for you tonight, anxiously anticipating, so.
We can do it. He's used to waiting for planes. Should we stand?
No, please. As you work.
Anticipating much paperwork here.
So Mr. Mayor, while Mr. Treeler's getting stuff put together there, the, the PowerPoints and everything, then we'll have those prior to the meetings on Saturday, correct? All of them? Right. Great.
You have bigger tail.
I know.
Dave, did you bring the, you bring the pizza? Pizza.
Well, good evening and I'm here to present Waterloo Fires 2018 budget request. So we just got a few slides to go over. We've been serving the community since 1904. Our mission statement is pretty basic, but it's to protect the lives and properties of the citizens of Waterloo by being an innovative and progressive emergency service organization. I included an org chart, just go over it briefly, is that we're made up of 106 sworn firefighters. We have three and a half full-time equivalent civilian positions. You can see that I'm the chief of fire services, we don't have an assistant chief on days. We break the department up into basically four different operations, the largest being fire operations. We do run three battalions, three shifts, 24 hours, 365 days a year. And we have three battalion chiefs that are listed there, Mike Moore, Mike Jen, and Marty Freshwater. We also have three captains, one per shift, Ryan Mahood, Carl Renninger, and Bill Harder. And we have approximately 20 fire lieutenants as well as 23 engineers. And our engineers are a very important role within the department, all of our positions are, but these men and women do a fantastic job operating our vehicles. We have a very low occurrence of accidents and so they do a fantastic job. We also have the EMS division. You can see there we've got listed a medical director, we've contracted with Unity Point for our medical director position and right now Dr. Chris Hill is assigned as our medical director. He's a good local doctor, he's young and he's been really good for us and given us direction in that area. We have one medical supervisor, Barb McBride's her name, she works days, she's a 40-hour employee and she oversees the operation of, of our ambulance service. We do have three medical officers, one per shift, and then we have approximately 21 assigned paramedics. And you can see there we have 59 total medics on the job. Our prevention bureau is a little light right now. We've got one fire marshal and that's all we have in our prevention area, relatively new person to the position. Chris Ferguson's the city's new fire marshal, we're pleased with that. We've got one person assigned out or has met training center that runs that center. I list a few of the services that we provide to the community, obviously fire and rescue. We do conduct fire investigations, we'll go into that a little bit further. Obviously the fire prevention's a big, a part of our operation. We do have a hazardous materials response team that serves 11 counties, including Blackhawk County. We obviously operate the, the ambulance service for the city. We have a tactical emergency medical team that works closely with the Waterloo PD tactical unit. We have a couple of specialized teams under technical rescue, one being high angle, another one being trench rescue, as well as we've got capacity for water rescue and services. So often asked how busy we are, our call volume for 2,000 So, often asked how busy we are, our call volume for 2016, that number is, was 10,551. And that's calls for service. You can see that I've got it broken down into unit, unit call volume, 5,481 fire-related calls for service and 6,807 EMS. And those are both up from 2015. So, our total unit response call volume's 12,288. So, that 10,551 calls for service, not every call is just one unit. That one call for service may generate six vehicles going to mitigate the issue. So, our call volume has been steadily climbing. Like I said, we've got 106 sworn firefighters, we operate out of six stations. We have one aerial device, one aerial unit for the city, operate six engines, and we have 11 specialty vehicles that include a gator, boats, that sort of thing. So, let's talk a minute about response times. Response times are a big deal in the fire service and we should all care about them. There are national standards, the National Fire Protection Association lists many different standards that fire departments should try to meet, and they're a benchmark, they're a national standard. You can see one there I've got quoted and I've got the NFPA standard listed there for you, but it says the fire department's fire suppression resources shall be deployed to provide for the arrival of an engine company within 240 seconds, four minutes, travel time to 90% of the incidents. So, how does Waterloo match up to that? I think very, very well. We hit it at 85% of the time, we're talking travel time here. So, once you get out the door to get to the emergency, we hit that number 85% of the time, and we're extremely proud of that number. You can see the bar graph to the right, we've improved our turnout time, which is the time it takes for our members to get on a vehicle, piece of apparatus to get out the door. We've really worked on that the last couple of years, we've improved our times there. And then the bottom bar graph is for our travel times. You can see in 2014, we're hovering about four minutes, 20 seconds in that range, and right now, we're approximately about three minutes or so on average. We do have some outliers, obviously some of our territory on the outside of our city is tough to get to, maybe Tyson's, Hawkeye Community College, that sort of thing. So, we've got a few new piece of apparatus that we've added to our fleet, which we're extremely proud of. We put Engine 304 in service in February of 16. We tried to order the exact same truck as the previous one and we got that done for continuity of the fleet and for maintenance, that sort of thing. We did save money by purchasing the exact same truck and we decided to do a few things differently to try to save money. We mounted the equipment brackets and the equipment on the truck ourselves. We decided not to order it with an onboard generator. That saved approximately $30,000. And we do have rigs right now in the city, fire trucks that have onboard generators, but they're out of service and they're too expensive to get fixed and there's really no time to fix them. So, move over to the ambulance service a little bit. We've got five ambulances that serve the city. Our busiest ambulance operates out of the downtown station, 2,500-plus calls a year in 2016, that is. And our second busiest ambulance is 332, which operates at a crossroads with 2,171 calls in 2016. We are a preceptor service, we work with a lot of surrounding colleges to allow their paramedic students and nursing students come ride with our ambulance service. I've listed a few of them there. Of course, we work with Hawkeye, University of Iowa, and Allen College of Nursing. So, I just threw this slide up there. I know the direction was not to get too much into numbers, but I thought it was relevant when we talk about the ambulance service, and that's our trending revenue collection. In 2012, you can see we're just over 1.5 million, and 2016, actual revenue collected was just a little over 1.8 million. I gave you a breakdown there of how we get paid, and you can see 36% of our revenue came from Medicare, 14% Medicaid, 50% came from other, which obviously includes private insurers, the VA, the railroad, that sort of thing. Give you a breakdown of our call volume for the EMS side, you can see that 3,322 calls were advanced life support type of calls. So, the ambulance service also has NFPA guidelines that we try to meet, and they're a little bit more generous on the EMS side, where they give 480 seconds or less, so that's eight minutes, 480 seconds or less travel time for the arrival of an advanced life support unit, so an ALS unit, and that's what we run here in Waterloo. So, they give you eight minutes to get there on scene with ALS, and then they say in a BLS, including AD, which is Automatic External Defibrillator, which all of our fire trucks have on them, within four minutes. And I'm really proud to say that we reached that time of getting on scene in eight minutes or less 96% of the time. We were blessed with putting a new ambulance in service in December of 16, and we're real pleased with it. It was purchased locally in Sumner, Iowa, from Lifeline Ambulance Service. And we changed our direction a little bit with the way we purchase our ambulances, we changed the chassis size, decided to go with a Ford 450, which in turn saved us about $25,000 just on the chassis alone. So, we're able to get into the ambulance for under $200,000. And just a little side note there, ran 187 calls its first month in service, so it was busy right away. We added some new equipment in 2016, auto pulse resuscitation device, extremely effective when, for doing CPR. I've listed some details about it. We only purchased one and it has been used multiple times since we put it in service. That item's about $13,000 item, so it's tough to have more than one in the department. We welcomed Radar, our new K-9 dog. He's a State Farm-funded K-9 accelerant dog. It was an aggressive application to be awarded the scholarship through State Farm. It was approximately a $25,000 award. Chris Ferguson, who's our fire marshal, is his handler, and you can see there he's already assisted with 22 investigations. We did obtain a grant from the Blackhawk County Attorney's Office for $10,000 that will help with the care, maintenance, and upkeep of the dog, so we think there'll be very little impact, general fund money's used to support the dog. I just give you a few, a little bit of information there on his investigations. Excuse me, there's been one arrest made with Radar working a fire scene. We work closely with PD on it, but we generally head up the investigation if it's fire-related. Hazmat Training and our Hazmat Training Center, like I mentioned earlier, we serve 11 different counties. We also have fire training out there, we have live fire training, we have a burn building there, and we host a wide range of different trainings out there. I give you some statistics there. We put on 125 different classes at the training center. If you're not familiar with it, it's located in 1900 Block at Newell, and we've taught over 3,000 students in 2016. Obviously, we have a wide range of hazardous materials classes that are offered, but some other ones that are fairly popular would be fire extinguisher training as well as CPR, confined space, and we do firefighter one and firefighter two training out there as well. Give you some numbers for formal training. We always set a goal of at least 10 hours per month training formally, and you can see there that we've done pretty well meeting that. We're right at the 10 per month on the fireside. All of our medics need continuing education hours. We provide that once a month in conjunction with our medical director. So, we're doing pretty well in training as well. Community involvement's a big part. We try to stay engaged with the community that we serve. We had a number of events throughout 2016 that were very positive. The MD boot block, the guys raised over $20,000 for that, which was fantastic. We're real proud of a residential Knox Box program that we got started. All the kudos go to Captain Bill Harder. He wrote the grant to the Guernsey Foundation, we were awarded over $20,000 for that. And there's a picture there of a box. It works well, we put them on a residential type of residence, and for someone that might have mobility issue problems, they live alone, and the key for us to make entry is located in that box. We use a key that we carry on the fire truck to get in that box, and then we're able to make entry without any damage. It works well because we already had the system in place on our fire trucks for our commercial Knox Box program, so it was just a good direction to go. We had some firefighters compete and raise money for the American Lung Association, and we hosted a blood clinic in our main station downtown, and it was amazing to me how much work's put on one of those things, but we gave up the entire station and they ended up having over 70 people donate blood. We're still working with the community schools for fire prevention efforts and for our kids to hopefully live a safe life. We did a couple of things, we went out on a, we went out a little bit out of our comfort zone and did a couple of Facebook Live sessions with our partner in education, Lincoln Elementary School. I was involved with those and I'm not a big Facebooker, but it was kind of an eye-opening experience for me, but good feedback from the school. We did an injury prevention type of talk that was obviously broadcasted in the schools. We gave a lucky young lady a ride home during EMS week from Lincoln in an ambulance that she got to go home. And we host a variety of car safety checkups or installations at our fire stations. We are safe haven, our stations are deemed that. We had in August, we had a young female infant dropped off at the station, and it just turned out real positive for that young lady, so I just thought I'd mention that as a highlight. And we're continuing the tradition of honoring our paramedic of the year and firefighter of the year. We had a very good ceremony this year at the Exchange Club at lunch, and I just thought I'd include that as a highlight. So, that is it with that.
So, the base budget that you have for fire actually equates to 108.59 full-time equivalent in positions, and that's an odd number because right now we have a fire safer grant that will expire approximately in October, so I've reduced that in the base level to only have the position while the grant goes on. We also added as an option to have the balance of that position paid for with property taxes, so that would bring their staffing back up to 109.25. Do you want to add?
No, so the department request is to, we're looking to stay at the same level of staffing. Property tax-wise, we're looking to increase it to fund the safer position that's going to expire in October. So, the request, I guess you may view it as an additional person. The way I'm viewing it is to keep the current staffing level where it's at, and I could certainly speak to that a little bit later.
That can't be extended, that grant?
No, it cannot. It was a two-year grant and we knew that going into it.
There's a number of charts here that show the breakout of firefighters. Their personnel costs, you can see that's where we have some slight increases, mostly leaving their other line item requests flat, except if you want to talk about that position there.
1547.
We've got a couple of ads in the additional column.
So, in account 1547, oils and greases, I'm asking for a significant increase there to $10,000. Typically, that account is used for mislaced items that we may need for our small equipment, a chainsaw, a power fan, that sort of thing. But what we're finding with the backlog with Public Works Central Garage, that we're needing more funds on our end to be able to get our vehicles serviced. And I've had a number of vehicles serviced outside of Central Garage. In particular, one of our newer ambulances was past its maintenance required checkup and oil change and lube, so we've taken that to a local dealership twice now. And I've done that with a few of our other newer vehicles. Engine 305 got its first service in Dawn's in Fairbanks. They're an authorized Cummings dealer. It was out there for a different issue, and then I had them service the vehicle. So, that request to go to $10,000, which is an $8,000 increase, is strictly to try to get our fleet maintained to the level where it should be, and I'm talking preventive maintenance. So, what I'm telling you is that our fleet is not being properly maintained currently, but I think that that increase to $10,000 would give us the ability to have some preventive maintenance done.
Is that, so the stuff that Mark does, he pays for, as I understand from him, it's in his budget?
Correct.
The stuff that you send out, you have to pay for?
No, yeah, the stuff that we send out, currently we're paying.
Okay.
And we've exhausted the oils and greases line item that we have right now. In fact, I think we've put a line item amendment in to get another $1,000 in that account for this year.
And we asked Mark the same question, would we be better off servicing your stuff at the manufacturers, you know, outside rather than trying to have Mark do it?
Talking service work, Councilman Linder, or you talking preventive?
I guess both.
Okay, I'd be comfortable having our preventive maintenance done with an outside organization or a third party, 100% I'd be there. My only issue with our Central Garage is the timeframe. We have extremely safe vehicles, we don't have problems with product coming out of there that's not being fixed properly. We have run into a problem getting to our vehicles in at other dealerships and trying to get them to prioritize us as more important than one of their other customers. And we found that in Dawn's and Fairbanks. Dawn's has been very good to the city of Waterloo, but we have the same problems there as well, that we'll have a vehicle sit for a number of days before it even gets looked at. So, to try to answer your question, I would prefer to stay with our vehicles being serviced at Central Garage, but 100% I'm not pleased with the turnaround, and we've had trucks out of service for far too long.
So, Pat, of the 10,000 calls, we'll round it down a little bit, what percent are actual fires?
We break our fires down into a number of different categories. I would say the substantial fires in Waterloo last year were just over 100. When you're talking actual, what I would deem a working fire that would not be put out with an extinguisher.
And in 15, our response time was three minutes and 22 seconds, so then in 16, what was our response time?
You talking overall for the department? I'd have to go back to that. I think what I referenced there, Councilman Jacobs, was the... I think what I referenced there, Councilman Jacobs, was the amount of times or the percentage that we hit our goal of a travel time of four minutes or less. I don't think I gave you an exact average response time. So on the EMS side, we hit the standard, the national standard, ninety-six percent of the time. And on the fire side, we hit it right at eighty-five percent of the time.
So we don't know exactly what the response time is, though. Like, is it similar to fifteen, like three point two-two, or is it three and a half minutes, or?
I would say it's similar.
Similar?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Lynn?
Now, Pat, if you were up for sainthood and this was the Catholic Church, they would have a canon law. You're talking to a devil's advocate. And, you know, don't take this wrong, because this question, these types of questions have to be asked. If we don't get the replacement funds from the rollback, commercial rollback, and we lose one point eight million bucks or whatever it is, and now we have to come to all the departments and say, you know, you're one of the bigger ones, you got to cut some, whatever you cut. Have you thought, would you close the station? Would you, could you, you know, could you give up five hundred thousand dollars?
We could give up five hundred. It would certainly one hundred percent come from personnel.
It would?
Yes. I think we're to the point of where we've cut many different areas within the department, especially administrative positions. And I do talk to all the other larger departments. And I have a rapport with a number of the chiefs of the larger departments. And administratively, our department is extremely, extremely thin or light. Sioux City's comparable for us, department our size, their city's a little bit higher population than we are. To give you an example, they have an assistant chief there that's assigned to days. They have a fire marshal, which we also have. But they have three deputy fire marshals in their prevention bureau. We don't have any deputies assigned right now. We just straight up have a fire marshal. We don't have any inspectors assigned there. So it comes down to personnel if we were faced with that type of cut that you're proposing or speculating on. And that would require us to either not fill positions or lay personnel off. And the current staffing level that we're at, we cannot keep Station Six open every day of the year. We come pretty close. So the second part of your question is, I would assume that it would trigger a closing of a station. And I would think it'd be a minimum of one and we'd have to look at maybe restructuring the entire city the way we respond to them.
Chief Treeler?
Go ahead. Chief Treeler, the department, or your request has proposed one oh eight point five nine, and then the request puts you back to, they're full-time positions, back to one hundred nine point two five. So at one hundred nine point two five, is that the ideal place to be? Or does this leave you short still from what we should, how we should man those stations?
Well, I'm going to try to answer your question, Mr. Morrissey. If we had ideal staffing, and I'm talking ideal being enough staff to keep six stations open with basically no fluff, bare bones type of budget, I would be comfortable running at a hundred and eleven and a half full-time equivalents, which would be thirty-five per shift is what we're truly trying to get at for, to operate six stations. So right now, we have one shift that has thirty-five personnel and two shifts that are thirty-four. And the reason I say that is because we have a minimum staffing of twenty-seven to operate six stations. So if you do basic math, you say, well, why would you need thirty-five if you only need twenty-seven to operate the stations? There's a number of contractual obligations we have with time off, different trainings, military leave, sickness, long-term sickness, those types of things. And we find ourselves quite often, if we're not at thirty-five mark, even with normal day-to-day occurrences of having seven to eight people off, it's dropping us below our twenty-seven. And we're needing to hire back overtime to make sure we can keep all six stations open. So ideal staffing, just the bare bone staffing, would be thirty-five per shift. Now, the direction or the conversations with the mayor and Michelle is that, you know, our goal here for sure is that we don't want to decrease our numbers. If we could increase them, you know, of course, that would help us, help us keep Station Six open as well. So my approach was to come and hope that we could at least have the safer grant funded after we lose that in October, so we don't go down a position. So that would be the way I'd answer that, Mr. Morrissey's. I think ideally, we'd be at a hundred and eleven and a half, and that would help us.
Thanks.
Chief, to follow up on Councilman Lynn's question, so most of our expense, as you pointed out, is labor. And knowing the average cost of a firefighter is over a hundred thousand dollars, if you look at any other efficient ways to produce or to cover that?
How do you mean, Mr. Jacobs?
Well, looking at what other cities have had to resort to, if you look at the use of a part-time firefighter.
Okay. I've certainly spoken with all the departments that are close to our size in population-wise, where a very large city is, you know, square miles-wise. There's, I'm not aware of any of the top ten cities that are utilizing part-time volunteer or paid-on-call. There might be, if West Des Moines is in the top ten, which I'm not sure if they are or not, but they may utilize some part-time personnel. But, so I have talked to all the chiefs from different departments. And the efficiencies that they're getting to the point of is cutting positions that we've already let go years ago. Assistant chiefs might be on the chopping block to try to reduce costs, deplete their prevention bureau, cancel some community outreach types of programs. We've already done all those things here.
So we've looked in the part-time positions, that's not an option whatsoever, or a volunteer firefighter force, or a cross-trained police officer to assist in emergencies? None of those are any options that we could look at down the road, or?
My opinion that they wouldn't work here for the city of Waterloo. Our size, our call volume, I don't think it's a path that we want to go down.
Chief Treeler?
Mr. Smith.
Oh, sorry.
Chief, I think everybody up here has high respect and regard for you and your staff. You've got a great group of people. And I know we've all enjoyed getting to meet a lot of your new hires, a lot of great young people. We appreciate that. But I guess my question is, you know, as I look in the Courier, once every couple of weeks, I'll notice the Waterloo fire calls. And I apologize, I can't remember now if it's on an average of fifty calls in one of those newspaper articles, or a hundred, it's one or the other. It's a round number like that.
Okay, I'm not sure what the Courier does.
Okay. And I'm not sure, I assume they get that from you or someplace, but.
Tim, you got that number?
But I'll bet you.
Yeah, they do get it. They do get the calls from us. We print a sheet off for Jeff Ryan's that comes by just about every morning.
Okay. And my point was, when I've looked at those, whether it's fifty or a hundred, but it's one of those even numbers, typically I would see two fire calls. And everything else is something else, which I'm not making light of them, but there's only two fire calls. And I guess, you know, part of my question is, as a property owner and happened to be fortunate enough to own a house that was built the last ten or fifteen years, I think when that house was built, there was a lot more money spent building that house with fire retardant and fire suppressive materials than a house that's fifty years old, or a house that's a hundred years old. Commercial real estate, every year is having to spend more money. The business community is having to spend more money to make commercial property more fire retardant, fire suppressive, that type of thing. So my point is, it seems like in a whole fire arena, for lack of a better term, every year is changing, and it's changing so that rather than a fire department per se, what we really need is an ambulance department that has an occasional fire call. And so from that perspective, going back to what Councilman Jacobs was saying is, you know, I think our six fire stations were laid out, and I wasn't here then, but I think it was in the sixties, maybe?
Correct. The majority of them were built in around sixty-nine. We do have a nineteen forty-eight version on Nevada.
Okay. And I understand the city, you know, has gotten bigger since then. Also, we all understand the population's dropped pretty dramatically. So we got less people paying for more city. That's a challenge we face. But it just seems like the fire group in general has not stepped back and looked at this and said, are we just continuing to do what we've been doing for the last fifty years? Or are we looking at this that maybe we need less fire and more ambulance? Maybe we need to relocate some of these fire stations? You know, Fire Station Six, as we've talked about, is a fire station that covers the most expensive housing stock in Waterloo, and that's the one that's been closed the most. And I think that that's made some people a little nervous. But what I've really heard more in that area of town is their concern about ambulance is much more than they have fire trucks, because there aren't any fires there. That's, I think, I can think of one fire in Ottoman Park in the last five years. Now, maybe I missed one, I don't know. But, I mean, it's a different, I think things have changed, and I don't know that we're looking at that and saying, what can we do more efficiently in a different way? You know, having, if not part-time staff, cross-trained staff, because it seems to work in other communities, certainly more inexpensive. And if we are in fact doing more ambulance calls, less fire calls, you know, I think one of your slides, and I'm sorry we didn't get a chance to see those beforehand, but one of those slides had about having the AED, I think, equipment it was, on your vehicles, on your ambulances and everything. Do we have those on police cars? Would it make sense to put those on police cars? Because as we're talking about thousands or tens of thousands of dollars, but if we're talking about saving one life, I mean, that's pretty miniscule money. It just seems like, I think we've gotten to the point, you're the, I believe, the second largest department in the city. And so it's probably incumbent upon you to try and figure out ways to be more efficient and rather than just saying, well, I don't think that'll work. And as you're talking about these other communities, you said you've been visiting with those chiefs on, are they all at a three-minute and twenty-two-second response time? Because it seems to me, I've read that we're like the only city in Iowa that's under four minutes. And I'm not sure where I read that.
Well, we got to be careful when we talk about response times, because there's total response and there's travel time. And I'm referring to travel time. And travel, and I think I was fairly clear on that, maybe I could explain it a little better, but travel time is deemed when you get out the door, so that the rig is, put themselves in service to when they get on scene. Now, that number changes, that total over-response time changes when you include what's called a turnout time. And generally speaking, that's a minute given to get on a rig. It varies for the time of day. So I guess your question was how we compared other communities for response times?
Right.
I would say that we're probably in the fifth or sixth spot there for total response time.
So there are metropolitan areas that have a quicker response time than we do?
Correct. Overall, response time would be, I'd give Dubuque for an example. Dubuque, I think, is less than thirty square miles. They operate six fire stations for that community. I'm ninety-eight percent sure their response times are better than we are.
Okay.
And there's other communities like that. So there's a lot involved with that. But I guess that was the only question you truly asked me, but I'd like to comment on a little bit of your statement there, is that we have made changes to our operations over the years to increase our efficiencies. We've taken a dedicated rescue truck out of service that was six jobs that, I wouldn't say we gave up, but we lost there. We, under Frank Magsman's direction, we went to a rescue pumper type of device, which has worked well for the city and it saved positions there. And we constantly are looking at our call volume and where our calls are originating from, and we know where they are. And we've got three frontline ambulances assigned each day, and we've got two that are in backup. And one's at thirty-six out there at Station Six, and one is at Station Three on Donald. And we know where our EMS calls originated on, and we need another ambulance on the east side. We need another ambulance dedicated out of Station Three. So we're working through some of those logistics. We would like to come to council and say, we need six more members. That's not the direction that I'm getting. So we are taking steps to make sure we're running efficiently. And we've got an integrated fire and EMS service, which I think is a good deal, for lack of a better term. We've got cross-trained employees. We've got all of our medics are firefighters. They pull up on a scene. They got SCBA's, their breathing apparatus right on the rigs. They've got their gear right on the rigs. So we do cross-train there. We are working with Waterloo PD to help them with their tactical unit. We've got eight of our members that have been training with theirs. But I think my position is to try to guide you as council, and I don't think the right direction is to go to paid-on-call volunteer or to have police officers trained as firemen. That's my opinion. And that's the opinion of many, many chiefs in the state.
So going back to Councilman Lynn's question about, you know, if, and again, Pat, nobody's out to get you, nobody's out to get your staff, we're not out to get jobs. What we're trying to do is figure out a way to have some kind of an impact on the budget. And the fact that you happen to have the second biggest department is why you probably have a little bit lengthier conversation than some of the folks that were here previously.
You bet. I understand that and respect that.
And so to Councilman Lynn's question, I think it was, or Councilman Jacobs, this, I don't think anybody's talking about having a full volunteer fire department like a lot of communities do have. But what we're talking about is, okay, so if you had to cut half a million dollars, rather than saying, okay, so now I got to cut a fire station or whatever, wouldn't it be realistic to say, well, maybe in conjunction with that, we could talk about having some volunteer people that maybe wouldn't be frontline firefighters, but they could be support individuals? I mean, I've oftentimes seen two or three fire trucks at a car accident, and really all the firefighters are doing that I can see is are directing traffic if there's not a police officer there. Or they're, you know, they're sweeping up the broken glass or washing down the gas, which I understand all that's got to be done. But going back to Mr. Jacobs' point, I don't think that needs to be done by a hundred thousand dollar a year person when it could be done by a volunteer person, or a part-time person, or a retired person. I mean, it just seems like there ought to be some way to do some kind of a hybrid thing here, is I guess my only point. Because I think, you know, something's going to have to give someplace, and I'm not saying it's going to have to give in your world, but today, or next year, or something, something's going to have to change. Because I just don't think local government can continue to do what they're doing across the board. But that's my opinion, yeah.
One comment quick on volunteers. Volunteers are really, really tough to get right now, even in the communities that don't have a mixed type of department. There was an article that just came out today that Storm Lake, I think they have two full-time paid firefighters and the rest are volunteer, and they're struggling to keep a volunteer force. I just think, I think it's a good talking point. I don't think it's realistic to try to merge into our operation, the way we operate, the standards that we have. I think we would need to keep every qualification that we have for a paid firefighter, the same for a volunteer, and that would be asking a lot. So I think it's a good talking point, and I think you're sincere in it. I don't think it meets up with reality, the way we operate here in Waterloo.
Two real quick things, Mr. Mayor. One is, you know,
So I think it's a good talking point, and I think you're sincere in it. I I don't think it meets up with reality the way we operate here in Waterloo.
Two real quick things, Mr. Mayor. One is, you know, what you said made me think of our volunteer police. And I think that that's worked pretty well. I mean, I'm sure it hasn't worked as well if they were all full sworn police officers, but I think it's worked well, and I think those individuals obviously must enjoy what they're doing, because my understanding is they spend about $5,000 of their own money to buy their own gear. And I'd be surprised, I wish Councilman Jones was still here, because I'm sure he'd sign up to be a part-time firefighter, because I know he enjoyed working with you folks on that. And then, what's the other thing you just said? I hate it when that happens? I can't remember.
So on the police item, that their reserve officers, I'm certainly not speaking for Chief Trelka, but they don't implement those officers to keep minimum manpower, my understanding. They don't, they they may augment a shift or a special event, but they're not saying if our if our minimum staffing's 10, hey, let's call in a reserve officer, that's not my understanding of the program. But I do think it is effective for how they use the, for the reserve officers.
And I remember what the other item was, but going back to what you were just saying, but there are instances, right, where we have somebody that's on a 24-hour shift, and then because of manpower shortages, we have them come right back for another 24-hour shift, and we're paying them 150, 200 bucks for that day versus the regular 100, because we have to, because we got no other option.
Correct.
I would think that, I'd sure take a part-time guy over that, when that person's already been on for 24 hours from a safety standpoint and everything else, and I think, again, we've talked about that in the past, whether it was with the police or you know, snowplow drivers, that that you reach a point where you've gotta have some rest, or or you become dangerous. So that's just a thought there. The other thing I was gonna ask is, regarding this episode, I just read about in the paper about these false certifications or whatever, do you, can you tell us what impact, if any, that's gonna have on the Waterloo Fire Department?
We're expecting it to have no impact whatsoever.
Okay.
I think we're, I think we're fortunate, there's a lot of departments that will be impacted, but I'm not aware of any, any of our members having an issue with a certification.
Gotcha, thank you.
Chief, Mr.?
I think we did, you had a question, Mr. Jacobs?
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, but if if somebody's watching this program right now, all 100,000 people that are and they wanted to be a volunteer, what what would they do to say, hey, I wanna come down, I wanna volunteer, really interested in serving? Is there an opportunity for somebody watching to kind of participate or learn how to, or something?
Well, there's certainly the opportunity this upcoming summer that we may have a like a Fire Ops 101 for the community, that could certainly be there. I meet with young, young individuals all the time that are asking for information on what they need for education, certifications, and training to become a Waterloo firefighter. We do have set certifications that are needed. But we don't utilize volunteers at all right now.
Pat, two, two quick questions on the budget. Is is time and a half pay and double time pay, is is that money that you had to spend because you had to fill in a second shift? Is that typically what that is?
So
So salary?
Are you talking 1533?
1114.
Well, like 1114?
Oh, sorry, yeah, 1114, the time and a half lineup. Yeah, that predominantly covers callbacks.
Okay.
So
Yeah, so people that, somebody called in sick and you gotta get somebody to cover their spot?
Correct, it's not 100% towards that, there's, there's some other events that we need to pay overtime for, but generally speaking
But generally.
Correct.
And what's bonus pay? On 1118?
So bonus pay is is out-of-rank pay. So anytime we have anybody move up a rank, contracts, we're obligated to pay them out of rank, and they are doing the job. So that, that there's out-of-rank pay.
So this level is working up, but this level gets that level's pay?
Correct, so a captain moves up to work Battalion Chief, he's off.
Okay.
He gets the Battalion Chief pay for that day.
Pat, Chief Traylor. Historically speaking, wasn't there a time not too far back where there were, you were staffed at 122 or 125?
Well, there's certainly been times that we've, we've been in that range, certainly in the 80s. We've been as high as 122 or 123 sworn, and that's not including, fire used to have the dispatch, there's other civilian positions that you could add to that, but realistically, we're in the 120 range. 115, 160 range in the late 90s, early 2000s, and we're, we're at our point now of 109 and a half.
And so over time, your staffing has been reduced down to, you know, 100, at 108.59 if the proposed budget without the safer was your budget.
Correct.
Okay.
And Waterloo Fire used to run the airport as well, and the city decided to go a different direction with that, and staff that area differently. So we we lost three to four positions with with that going away.
So you have had reductions over time, and and I was wondering, I, there's comments made all over the place about different departments being top-heavy, heavy. Would you consider your fire department top-heavy?
No, not, not at all. I mean, a lot of departments this size will have an assistant chief, that's on days, we don't have that here. I made, I gave an example of our Fire Prevention Bureau. We're down probably three or four people administratively with the five largest departments that you would compare us to. So administratively, we're solid, we're lean there. What I'm saying solid, we're lean, there's no fluff there whatsoever.
Okay, thanks.
I just have, you probably can't answer this, but you talked about Sioux City, you talked about Cedar Rapids, other cities, and I certainly don't want to compare Waterloo to any other, other city. But I think a point that probably should be at least recognized is that we run a fire-based EMS system, where Sioux City probably has the same, and I believe they do, have the same manpower, but don't run an EMS system. Cedar Rapids doesn't run an EMS system. And they have the same or more manpower. So he's efficient in a whole host of areas. He's cut back on his administrative staff, and we're running, Waterloo's running fire and EMS with the same manpower that just, so they're multi-rolled firefighters here. And in those cities that I just threw out, they don't have an EMS system. Their provided, their EMS is provided by another, like a hospital, or, you know, Iowa City is a, Iowa City Hospital provides it. But I, I think that that's a system that works. It's, we get the three-minute response with the engine company, with the BLS, the basic life. As the numbers were, I think it was eight minutes for ALS. That's, those are providing services to the continuity of care for those patients. They get BLS three minutes, they get ALS within seven to eight minutes, and those are standards. And then they're transported immediately to definitive care at a hospital. And most of the calls probably are EMS.
All right, thank you. You said BLS, and I know it's not a laughing matter, but I was thinking of BLT.
Getting hungry, huh?
Sioux City, for example, Sioux City has 111 sworn personnel, 114 total with their department staffing. And Councilman Powers is correct, they do not run EMS. They run six stations, but they don't run EMS. Their minimum manpower is is equivalent to ours without, without EMS.
All right, right before you get down, Keith, you can start making your way this way. One other thing that I probably didn't realize is in proportion to square mileage of cities, how does Waterloo rank? Are we smaller per square miles, or larger?
Well, I think it depends what study you look at, but we're either the third-largest geographical city or the fourth largest, I think.
Yeah, I think we're bigger than Cedar Rapids square mile, or Iowa, Des Moines square miles-wise.
We have a lot of land, you know.
All right, hey.
Am I here?
I mean, is it, I mean, you've answered questions, I'm pretty sure you'll be getting some more.
Okay, very good.
Did you, were you done?
You're done. So, thank you.
Thank you.
So Keith knows he has to be done by nine o'clock, right? Hello?
I was thinking eight.
Hello? Hello?
It's funny, you said it. We've been having that.
We're leaving the gate at nine.
That's right.
Don't you mean eight, Councilman Smith?
What?
Yeah, eight.
I wasn't gonna Kelly's just getting, Kelly's just getting warmed up. And her note digging over there. Oh, I got a Cernola bar in my pocket, I'm sitting for the whole night.
On the presentation that you gave, and not be distracted by all this.
Blueberry?
Good evening, council members and mayor, Keith Caspar Airport Director. I I know I'm last, hopefully certainly not least, and I'll make it quick because I know you're all tired, so we'll get moving on. Mission of the Waterloo Regional Airport, to use the resources of ALO to the maximum benefit of the region. We've had our duties and services to the public. Provide a safe environment to the aviation public for the following: Commercial air transportation services to the flying public with passenger service to Chicago Aerie International Airport on American Airlines, a major network and legacy carrier. Full-service fixed base operator with Livingston Aviation for aircraft services such as fuel, maintenance, flight training, aircraft storage, rental car, aircraft charter services, and other common aviation services to the flying public. We have a limited FBO operator with Sweeter Aircraft Services, mechanicals, aviation and mechanicals avionics, as an FA-certified repair station for aircraft and airframe service and engine repair. And for the includes of purchase, sale, and brokerage of general aviation aircraft. We've got an excellent runway configuration, our airfield total is approximately 2,600 acres. We, our primary runway, runway 12308400 feet long by 150 feet wide, that's a standard width of a runway. Runway 1836 at 6,000 by 150 feet. That's our secondary runway, that runway did receive a fair amount of stimulus funds during the, the latest 2009 Ara stimulus funds. And then we have a general aviation only runway, our east-west 624 at 5,400 feet by an odd width of 129 feet wide. Our organizational structure, city council, office of the mayor, we have seven-member airport board with two council liaisons, and for us, that would be council member Schmidt and Lynn, one airport director, one part-time airport bookkeeper, one airport maintenance foreman, and three maintenance technicians. We've had a fair number of accomplishments during the fiscal year 2017 term. And as you can see there, and there's a lot of information on these slides, so if you have any questions during your review, please feel free to give me a call at any time, but we're proud of the accomplishments that we've accomplished year-to-date, and as we get ready to close out fiscal year 2017. Highlights and pa, highlights and accomplishments, passenger service, we had another good year, 2016, we exceeded 2015's total for passenger traffic. And our best year since 2008, so we think we're continuing on the right track, and our numbers are trending in the right direction. Due to the increases in the passengers using the airport, the airport saw a nice increase in parking revenue to 170,981, which was an increase of $14,680, or approximately a 14.2% increase over calendar year 2015. We are looking forward to getting over the next couple of days the final closeout documents for FAA grant number 44. And once this is done, we believe that we'll be able to carry over the unused entitlement funds from the FAA to our fiscal year 2018 program, about $122,000. This is a program that has been unfortunately delayed, but we now have all this work done, and the closeout documents will probably be hopefully on Monday's council agenda. We completed a fair amount of work this fall for the work through the rebuild Iowa infrastructure program through the Office of Aviation, and looking forward to continuing that work in fiscal year 2017 with that grant that was approved earlier this, late this fall. We did provide service with regard to support by staff, with regard to nearly 500 Cedar Valley veterans and sponsors for the three annual Honor flights. In two weeks, we will see the next generation of passenger security equipment as funded by the Department of Homeland Security and the Transportation Security Administration. That will be a nice addition to the terminal complex. Here's our highlights and accomplishments, we are operating a maintenance budget of just over a million dollars. Thankfully, due to continuing to scrutinize our budget, we are self-sufficient today. Our number one source of revenue for the airport department is, believe it or not, farm revenue. We lease approximately 1,300 acres, and that brings us to 364,000, there about. $176 for soy, bean, and corn acreage revenue. Airline revenues, 215, and as you can see there, and then the capital budget of just over a million dollars, 1.1. We, as a recipient of the Federal Aviation Administration's Airport Improvement Program, we receive annually a million dollars, we match that with approximately $100,000. And the local match is derived via the Passenger Facility Charge program at 10%. What's been happening over the years is that our, our passenger numbers have not gotten back to where they were many years ago, but the FAA about four or five years ago, when in 2012, the Congress redid the reauthorization bill, they reduced the federal funds from 95% to 90%, thereby doubling our local match requirement costs. So we're trying to be a little bit more prudent about how we can continue to fund our local match for these major projects that we do every year. Highlights and accomplishments, airport and air service marketing, we received on an 80/20 funding split approximately $20,000 from the Office of Aviation, we matched that with 20% or 7,000 for a total of $35,000. We're able to twist that and stretch it and whatnot, and make significant use of that. But over the last three-year period, our annual passenger traffic has increased by an average of 10.3%. We're very proud of that, and we hope that trend continues. We've also been able to, over the last couple, three years, make some very good relationships with local media officials, such as what you see on the following, there are a number of media agencies, whether it's newsprint, television, radio, and we're also on the campus of the University of Northern Iowa. And we're, we're pleased, pleased with that, and then what we did with some silver sponsor funds for the promotional video that you'll see on the city's new website, so we're looking forward to continuing that theme. We do some work in the Cedar Valley business monthly, as you may be a subscriber to that, and we're looking forward to that continuing. For this next fiscal year period, we're looking at extending five-year rental car agreements with our two rental car partners, Avis Budget and Hertz, and then to create and fill the vacancies with our advertising concessions out at the terminal area baggage claim area. This summer, we're gonna be busy. We've got a major project that is in the final stages of design right now, and this is gonna be approximately $2.8 million for some tax-free Charlie work, some runway and airfield painting, so all told, that's gonna be about $2.8 million. Michelle and I have been working closely together, I would think, with regard to how we're going to pay for that local match, that's about $265,000. There about. Capital infrastructure costs, this is some of the work that fiscal year 2017's I.DOT grant, approximately $101,000. By the time you get done with the design services and construction administration and inspection, we actually get to about $76,000 worth of actual construction improvements. Fiscal year 2018 goals, complete the rig ride for various FAA mandated documents. Again, complete the concession agreements, which would increase our terminal revenue. We've got our triennial disaster exercise coming up this year in August, that's every three years. And hopeful three years, and hopeful pending approval of the CIP program, complete the installation of a new parks or parking access and revenue control system. And if we can receive permission and authorization from the FAA to sell some of our older snow removal equipment that is no longer used, and hopefully deposit some of those funds to supplement the PFC account. This is what is going to be looked at for this year. We would like to play host to the University of Missouri Mobile Fire Training Unit. It's been going back and forth between Dubuque and Cedar Rapids for the last number of years. I would like to host that here, and with regard to account 1315 Education and Training Staff is requesting $20,000. The cost of the trainer itself is approximately $12,000, not including approximately 500 pounds of propane. Looking at continuing to see if we can expand our marketing program, staff is requesting a significant increase over the last fiscal year. The 7,000 of the 37 is our local match. I'm requesting an additional increase of $30,000 to allow us to do a continuing 12-month campaign of marketing the airport and the airline moving forward. This is another issue that I think is needed for the airport is to complete a true market study and a leakage analysis, looking at exactly where our passengers in the Cedar Valley and northeast Iowa are flying from. The TMS or the True Market Study and the leakage analysis would provide that. Update the airport website if we can and add a cost calculator to the future updated website. Staff is requesting $35,000. We've had some issues with some challenging wildlife on the airfield. Account number 1319, other professional services would be to consult with a wildlife management for the cost of trapping and getting rid of the badgers that we have on the airfield. My concern is, is that if they get into the electrical conduit and the lighting, we would spend a great deal, more than $5,000 fixing the airfield lighting, which of course is a safety issue. Right in the runway and taxway safety areas, there's holes burrowed. We fill them as soon as we see them, but of course, this is a, this is an animal that doesn't take no, very easily to get off the airfield. Another thing that we'd like to do is to contract with AECOM Technical Services for regard to being able to provide some preliminary design, hopefully, and some estimating services. As you can see there, we've got a number of airfield, I should say, landside of the terminal parking lots that are showing significant, I'll say, distress in addition to some of our streets that are showing significant wear and tear as well. And of course, as we get ready to prepare ourselves as a city department with regard to the transition of the county radio system, I would like to add some additional radio equipment. We purchased some late last fiscal year. I'd like to continue that program into fiscal year 2018. That would allow us to have day-to-day operations and communications, and then also for the, during emergency response, if we have something happen out at the airport. An example of some of the street conditions, and this is actually Airport Boulevard, this is one of the better ones. Betsworth Drive and Lexington Lane are in poor condition. That's why I would like to, at least in the interim period until we can get some significant rehabilitation or more expensive reconstruction completed, would be to then provide some minimal maintenance, crack seal work, et cetera, et cetera. And of course, city travel professional training, a lot is there. Staff is requesting approximately $10,000 for various travel and professional training. And as you see there, staff is going to be requesting $25,000 for, as our buildings continue to get older, some of those systems, anything aviation-related to fix, is incredibly expensive. Even though we have, I'll say, lease agreements with many of our tenants, the maintenance responsibility primarily lies with the airport, not tenant. And of course, this is the account that we usually use to lease mowers and shredders for annual airfield turf maintenance. And of course, a lot of our personal protective equipment with regard to those personnel that are engaged in aircraft rescue and firefighting operations, the silver proximity gear and the self-contained breathing apparatus, it's reaching its service life, and I would like to begin to replace that. And then, any questions that, that the council may have?
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Keith, I thought we discussed at the board meeting that the maintenance on the streets were the responsibility of the street department, because they're city streets.
Betsworth Drive is scheduled for rehabilitation in 2023.
But they won't.
Move it up. It was, it was.
They won't crack seal?
It was brought to my attention, and we're taking a look to see what we can do to kind of move that up to 2023.
It'd be nice to take that out of their budget if the street department's going to fix it eventually.
Yeah, yeah, we'll, we'll take a look, but it's, yeah. Pretty much, it's locked in already for this next year, but we're trying to move some things around. Keith has let us know, and we, and I know it's council's will to get something done to that sooner than 2023, so we're taking a look at it to kind of heat the requests.
And I'd like to assist the council in answering any questions they may have on the actual budget itself that you may have in front of you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Real quickly, Keith, you think the 30% increase in ridership, right? 10% a year, each year for three years, 30%?
That's, that's about the average we're seeing. That is correct, sir.
Is that, is that a combination of the advertising campaign that we're doing and the pricing structure that we're much more competitive with Cedar Rapids especially, but Des Moines or whatever?
I think that's well said, Councilman Schmidt, it's that. It's looking at the airlines and having a contact. If, if our fares are way out of whack, then I have somebody that can reach out to and see if they'll make them a little bit more palatable to, to get them more in line with our two competitors, three if you include Moline, Cedar Rapids, and Des Moines, but also two, I think it's the outreach that I've been encouraged to do, whether it's Rotary Group, Lions, Exchange Clubs, things like that. I think it's been helpful to bring more awareness of what the airport is going on and that kind of outreach.
Do you want to talk at all about any alternative airlines in addition to United?
I think right now, I think, you know, when we made our, when we made our visit to Dallas in October, and I think that was well done, and American visits with about 50 cities a year, and they encouraged us when we left the meeting that we need as a city to be a part of that annual visitation. So I'd like to continue to build ridership on American, and so that eventually we can approach them and look at, have them look at Waterloo for justifying a third departure to Chicago here, which I think would be very helpful for us.
Wouldn't there be a benefit to going to Minneapolis or someplace else rather than having two airlines going to Chicago?
Well, honestly, Minneapolis is a great hub, without question. It's dominated by over 70% by Delta Airlines. Delta Airlines told me approximately five years ago that they do not want to serve small markets anymore. The smallest market that they want to most likely serve is the Cedar Rapids. Cedar Rapids does over a half a million outbound passengers a year. With Delta's presence in Cedar Rapids, the reason they can do that is because they do saturation. They, they have three departures on Delta each day to Minneapolis, St. Paul, Detroit, and Atlanta. So what I'd like to do is continue to build our ridership on our legacy and network carrier, and that's American Airlines. And I think we've done a good job to date. The I.DOT marketing funds has been key for us. Without those, we'd be in tough shape. Thanks.
Mr. Mayor. So Keith, this budget, we're going to lose 90 grand, right? The general fund budget, not lose, but overspend 90 grand, but I thought we couldn't do that by ordinance.
By ordinance, I don't know how we could honestly do that, though.
Well, I'm just saying, is this?
Legal?
Not legal, but is, Michelle hasn't stabbed you in the back yet or anything on this budget issue.
It doesn't comply with the ordinance that a prior council approved.
This would not, correct?
Not the additional level.
Good. But it's not that we couldn't approve this budget, it's, I mean, there's no penalty? You know what I'm trying to say?
Taxpayers are going to pay more, I guess.
Yeah, I understand.
Yeah, and Keith will probably tell you, folks, we've been having greater conversations about doing more for the airport than we probably have had in the last five to 10 years. So, you know, we'll go out and take a look at it, but at least, you know, he's taking a look at parking, which is what, over 200, 200?
About $115,000 a year. About $115,000.
I think he's asking you how much you want to spend.
Oh, I'm sorry, on the CIP. Their request is.
It is.
The request for the CIP for the replacement of the parking equipment is $250,000.
Which, to prior knowledge, I don't know if we had a, we've said we'd take a look at that much money going towards the airport. So I mean, there's, we see the progress, and I think we know it's a critical time to continue to move forward. Great question about what's made the transition, but the airport is looking at receiving some considerable money through the process, and then taking a look at a role project, as long as it doesn't, it's the private public taking a look at moving that up as well in our street, with our streets, I think that's significant progress.
Mr. Mayor, we, oh, I'm sorry.
Did you have a question?
Mr. Mayor, I just had a comment. You know, Keith, it's, sometimes we, we ask tough questions, but I also want to let you know that I have talked to a lot of people, and that you should be commended about how you've managed the airport. I've heard nothing but great things regarding our airport, and it's something that we're really proud of, so you should be commended on, I think, a great job done out there.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. I, I just want to advise the, the council that they may or may not know, the board, the airport board is supportive of the, in my position, looking at the capital improvement program. According to Noah Anderson, it, before I got here, the CI program was pretty much an afterthought. It had been about 21 years since the airport, as a department of the city, received any kind of a CIP approval. So in that, but that's not being, you know, that's not being negative, it's just stating the obvious. We've applied all of our attention and funds towards airside development and the replacement of some antiquated snow removal equipment. I would stack up our snow removal equipment fleet with anyone in the state. Now maybe it's just time to turn our attention on the capital improvement side to the landside, streets, parking lots, et cetera, et cetera, so that we are truly the front door of our, of our community, and I'd like to showcase that with improved infrastructure over time, of course, and as we as a city can, can, can find approval for that.
And just to back up what Councilman Jacobs said too, yeah, our previous airport directors were all swell people, but you're much more outgoing, much more, you know, marketing oriented, much more embracing, and Michelle and I see you at Rotary every Monday, and so I want to compliment you for doing that. I think that's a lot to do with the activity out there, too. The other thing I was just going to say, I don't know, have there been any recent conversations about the Waterloo Regional Airport becoming a regional airport and going to Sier Falls, Charles City, Waverly, O'Wan, all these other communities, and seeing if they'd like to participate in the $90,000 and make it a real regional airport? I mean, I think that's what all of our competition's done, and I just don't think we've really, I know there was a conversation 10 years ago or something that apparently didn't end well, and I don't know if there have been any conversations since then, but if there haven't been, I think there should be.
To my knowledge, no substantial conversation has been discussed, other than minimal conversation at the airport board level.
Yeah, and I think with our shared services discussion that Jim mentioned as well, that's another topic we need to at least have a conversation, but we also need to see what the city of Waterloo has invested in the library, I mean, in the airport thus far, because there's hundreds of thousands of dollars that we put in there, so by, you know, when we do move to that direction and have those conversations, that money needs to be realized somehow. At one point, close to half a million dollars, so.
Yeah.
We're going to get that from, but I mean, now's the time to have that conversation. He's done an awesome, awesome job, and I was a little concerned that he'd be able to get through 45 PowerPoint slides in nine minutes, but he did it. He did it.
Well, I, I disciplined myself from 42 to 30, but I will, I will be honest with the council and the general public, I, as a department head for the city, I do not want to be a burden on the, on the city's general fund at all. I, I can be very prudent with the taxpayer dollars that, that is allocated to the airport department. Some, some serious discipline can continue in that regard, and Michelle and I, working together, I think we can certainly continue that, and if I can't get a lot of this work done, maybe I can, I've already applied for grants for the True Market Study and leakage analysis that, that has fallen through, but I've also applied for USDOT marketing funds twice that has fallen through. So now I need to, if we want to continue to market our facility and our airport to this immediate area, I'm asking for some significant support from the council to enhance our marketing funds, to allow us to do a 12-month year-round campaign. The radios, if I can, if I can order the number of radios that I would like for the vehicles and apparatus for emergency response, I can certainly maybe pair that back and, and do, do it again next year, but I, I do not want to be a burden on the general fund. No department wants to be a burden on the general fund.
It's funny you say I don't want to be a burden to the general fund, and you said, but if I can get those transmitters or those ding, I'll take them.
Michelle. Michelle. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Michelle, beyond the, the base, what additional funds is Keith requesting? The total amount?
Well, that, so for his operating, it's like 86,000, but then he's also pushing ahead with a $2.8 million AIP project that he doesn't have enough match identified for, and has made other CIP requests, so he, he actually is asking for a significant investment of tax dollars.
Are, are we going to know that, that dollar amount soon?
Well, your operating's the 86 in front of you. If you go to the PFC activity, he's over, he probably needs 200,000 there, and then whatever he's asking for through the CIP as well.
That's the challenge of a lot of airports, where you have a decrease in number of passengers, but now the federal government has sought forth to reduce the federal funding that is allocated to small airports. That extra 5% would mean everything to us. If we had that extra 5%, which I've already been told is never coming back, that would allow us to be able to fund on an annual basis these major capital projects. We're pulling entitlement from, from '15, '16, and now, now that we're in fiscal year 17 with the federal government, we're using every dollar that we can to apply towards the taxway Charlie runway joint project and airfield painting, which airfield painting alone, not including our east-west runway, is about $143,000.
I'd just jump on, I would just jump on the bandwagon of complementaries, the, with America and your work and the airport staff's work, on-time flight departures and arrivals have been pretty good.
Thank you.
I think it's, I think that's a selling point, too, that needs to be talked about. I know American tries to do that.
We've come a long way, but we've got a long way to go. Thank you all.
Motion adjourned.
Thank you.